Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, May 7, 2019. Welcome to a lot of new faces here in the audience and everyone that's watching at home. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Next, adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Please cast your ballot. That passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you. We have three proclamations that we're going to start with this evening. It's always nice to be able to recognize the great works that are happening around not only Yountville but Napa County in general. We're going to start, I believe, Harry Collimore is here, Quality Coordinator with Napa County Mental Health Division, to receive a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. If you please join me at the podium. This is a proclamation recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month 2019. Whereas one in five individuals will experience mental health issues in their lifetimes, which can affect parents, sisters, brothers, spouses, coworkers, and others. Whereas Napa County Mental Health Services seek to reduce barriers to access, improve community outreach, and engagement that ensures competent care to communities through culturally diverse services and policies. Whereas a holistic approach to services, which includes prevention and early intervention, is an effective way to meet the needs of individuals at risk of developing mental health issues, individuals who are experiencing early onset of the symptoms of mental illness, or individuals with serious mental illness or severe emotional disturbance. Whereas there is a strong body of research documenting that with support and treatment between 70 and 90 percent of individuals with mental illness have a significant reduction in symptoms and improved quality of life. Whereas while there is still much work to be done to eliminate disparities in services and increase education about mental illness, Napa County service providers are to be commended for their collaborative approach when working with individuals in need. Now therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the Town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you for all you do for our community and for being here tonight. So, please, share your thoughts.
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of quick things. I won't keep you long. I would simply say the county takes point on a lot, but it is absolutely, as the proclamation states, a collaborative effort with a number of nonprofit programs, community members, schools, faith-based organizations, you name it. And I think the thing we have learned over the last several years here in the county is that the great pressure of the stressful experiences that we've had, whether it be the terrible experience we all had over at the Veterans Home recently, or the fires, even the earthquake, has actually forged even tighter bonds because while the statistics do say one in five, that's if everything's sort of normal. In situations like that, everybody experiences some kind of a mental health distress and difficulty. And we've certainly appreciated the support and willingness of community members of every stripe and town councils of every stripe, everybody stepping forward as the need presented itself. It actually brought out the best in us. And we're still, I think, reaping the benefits of that as we move forward to work as carefully and best we can with our citizens and with their families. So thank you very much to the Town of Yountville for the support that you all give to your town members as it relates to mental health services. And hopefully we will continue to do our good work moving forward.
And I just want to say on behalf of the council and our staff and the rest of our Yountville community, in addition to what you already recognized, there's some very challenging times going through the wildfires and the concerns that we had then, the county mental health services professionals stepped up and were available to us then also. And unfortunately, we know that you will all be available the next time we need you also. But knowing that your support services are available is very much a comfort. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Oh, and for anybody who wants some, I have some more green ribbons indicative of mental health awareness.
And we all got ours up here already, so. Yes, please.
That's okay.
Next, we get to recognize some of our own folks. Our Public Works Team, as we proclaim May 19 through the 25th of this month, National Public Works Week. So I believe we have our Public Works Director. We get to see Joe Tagliabassi all the time. We don't get to always see Larry Hancock, our Municipal Operations Supervisor, and Don Moore, Utility Operations Manager. Don normally shows up with family in tow. There they are. So please, if the three of you could join me at the podium. Welcome back. I think the two of you are getting used to this, aren't you? This is a proclamation for National Public Works Month, May 2019. Whereas public work services provided in the Town of Yountville are integral to maintaining buildings and infrastructure, as well as providing a healthy, comfortable, and safe environment for residents, visitors, and businesses. Whereas the dedication, skill, and experience of our Town of Yountville Public Works Staff are integral to the quality and longevity of town facilities and systems, the natural beauty of parks and open space, as well as the planning, design, and construction of a significant number of capital projects. We're living through one right now, right outside the front door. Whereas citizen-supported municipal services, including water, sewers, streets, public buildings, and solid waste collection, is critical to the operations of Yountville's Public Works Department. Whereas the efficiency of the dedicated Yountville Public Works Personnel is influenced by the people's positive attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Whereas our Public Works Staff prioritize service to Yountville residents, visitors, and businesses regardless of the timing or natural conditions in which they work, including during wildfires, floods, power outages, severe weather, and other challenging circumstances. Now therefore be it resolved, I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the Town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as National Public Works Month. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the Town of Yountville to acquaint themselves with the process involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions public work staff make every day to our health, safety, and high quality of life. So thank you. On behalf of the rest of the team. And any one of you like to, I know you guys love the spotlight. Don, go ahead.
Thank you all for this honor. The last couple of times, we've kind of shared in saying a little something. And we always thank the council and our coworkers. But I was just in the audience talking with one of the residents in town, and they commended us on just our quick response to things that happen. I'd like to thank our community as well. There are kind of our eyes and ears out in town, and when we get a call, we treat everyone with the same zest and efficiency, whether it's something small, a cat in the tree, or water main break on Yount Street or something like that. So, yeah, sometimes they're inconvenient, but you all made it here in spite of all the work. Thank you again. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I think I saw, oh, there you are, Lindsay. Our next proclamation is to recognize Visit Napa Valley and National Travel Tourism Week, which is May 5th through the 11th. And we have Lindsay Gallagher, the new President and CEO of Visit Napa Valley, to join us here this evening. Lindsay, if you'd join me at the podium.
Nice to see you again. Thank you for having me.
I bet you can tell how this is going to go.
I hope it goes well.
Yes. So do I. This is a proclamation recognizing National Travel Tourism Week, May 5th through 7th. Sorry. See, it's not going well. May 5th through 11th, 2019. Whereas the Town of Yountville has been a travel destination since the late 1800s, flourishing with the arrival of the railroad merchants and farmers. Whereas today, the travel industry continues to have positive effect on Yountville and Napa County's economic prosperity and image abroad, as well as business productivity and individual travelers' well-being. Whereas in 2018, visitor spending on lodging generated $6.96 million in tax revenue for the Town of Yountville, over 60 percent of the town's budget. Whereas in 2018, travelers' spending in Napa County generated $2.23 billion in economic output, supporting an estimated 16,000 jobs, and generated tax revenues of $85 million for county and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs for our communities. Whereas it is the hard-working people employed in the tourism and hospitality industry who, through superior customer service and comfort to guests, are the core of this industry and its success. We also recognize the industry's support of the community during the fire evacuation and recovery, extending world-renowned hospitality to our citizens. Now therefore, I, John F. Dunbar, do hereby proclaim May 5 through 11, 2019, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Yountville, and urge the citizens of Napa County to join all of us in a special observance with appropriate events to commemorate, congratulate, and celebrate the people in tourism and hospitality. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council for this opportunity. I'm a little more casually dressed than I normally would be, but I spent the morning with 150 other volunteers on the Vine Trail, helping to clean up trash and spruce things up a little bit throughout the valley today. So we were thrilled at Visit Napa Valley to be able to spearhead that outreach and have partners in hospitality and visitor-serving industry and businesses come together today to volunteer our time and to help beautify one of our most precious resources here in the valley, I think, which is the Vine Trail, which is a benefit both to our visitors and to our community as well. At Visit Napa Valley, we are focusing this week on why tourism matters and tourism giving back to our community that gives us so much. So the tourism industry this week is continuing to support local initiatives and underscoring the importance of the well-being of our community while also remaining a significant positive force in Napa Valley's economy. Revenues from tourism allow local governments to invest in services and programs that benefit all residents, including infrastructure improvements, civic amenities, and public safety. Tourism creates demand for a diverse range of goods, services, and cultural programs, and those are available both for our residents and our visitors to enjoy. So thank you for this recognition today, and thank you for your year-long support of tourism and all that it brings to this community.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. And thank you for helping clean up our community. That's very nice. That's a bonus. Next up on our agenda is public comment. So any comment that members of the public would like to present to the council on an item that's not on our agenda, now would be the time to do that. Yes, Rose?
First of all, thank you. Good evening. I had a problem the other day with the bike trail people. I feel bad now talking about it, but, you know, it's, what happened was, one of my veterans, you know, I call them my veterans because they are my veterans, you know? And I think I'm one of the few people in town that they spend Thanksgiving with me, they spend Christmas with me, so, in my home, you know? And they have a good time. But I was outside in front talking to somebody, and this poor little old veteran, it was the day that was super hot, is in a wheelchair, and it wasn't an electric chair, it was just a regular wheelchair, and he's on the sidewalk, and he stopped for a few moments to get some shade, obviously, because it was overly hot, and I could tell he was hot. And these people came on the bike, on the sidewalk, and told him to move out of the way. That's not how you treat people, not, you know, our veterans, anyway. Yeah, I'm overprotective with them, yes. But you were just talking about all the money you guys make in taxes and stuff. Put up signs, you know, before they hit into town and say, "No bicycles on sidewalks." You know, that's what the trail's for, that's what the side of the road's for, but, you know, and this poor old man, he was just like, he didn't know which way to go, and he kind of fell off the edge of it a little bit. And so, we went out, we helped him. I wanted to get him a glass of ice water, but he was just so baffled, he just left, you know? So I'd like to see something like that go up in Yountville. You guys are really adamant about having signs all over the place. That would be a nice sign to have out there, you know, and you could do it in your fancy black and whatever, gold, whatever you want to do. But it's just to protect people that are walking on the sidewalks, because these guys fly on their bikes. Somebody eventually will get hurt, you know? And that's all I got to say, you know? So I'd like you guys to consider that, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rose. Thanks for sharing that. Appreciate it. Any other, I see our Public Works Director in the back nodding his head that he's heard the message loud and clear, and you've now got the ear of our Sergeant, so, see how quickly we respond to things around here? Actually, the signs just went up. They just now went up. Any other public comment on something not on our agenda? Okay, we'll move on to our consent calendar items. We have items 7A through, how many do we have here? H. Is there any discussion, or is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Mayor, just for clarification, I distributed a correction to the minutes of April 16th, and that is at the dais for you.
Okay. And non-substantive correction on that?
We added to the winery tasting room discussion, Vice Mayor Dorman supports bringing this item forward for discussion. We added that sentence to the minutes.
Okay. So with that correction to the minutes of April 16th, is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the adoption of the consent calendar, and with that one change, that Vice Mayor Dorman supports bringing the item forward.
Thank you. So there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes, it looks like the numbers coming up before everybody's even hitting their buttons. I'm not sure if that's happening.
Pretty fast. I'm not doing anything.
She isn't. I'm sure that's not the case. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have the first of two presentations. We will start with our CAL FIRE Public Safety Quarterly Report. Yes, up front. I'm used to looking in the back corners.
Thank you, Sandra.
Welcome.
Thank you. A little disheveled today. I've been recovering from a little back injury. How is everybody?
All right.
Good. All right, so our quarterly report for the first quarter of the year. Within the quarter, we responded to 504 calls. I do want to note, on the first slide, they did have a little bit of a typo with the graphics. The graph to the left should state first quarter, not third quarter, but all the numbers correspond. So, as usual, medical aids are high priority, the majority of the calls that we go to. We did have a little bit of an uptick in traffic collisions with the increase in the weather. That was one note of that. So for the total of the town, we responded 99 times within the city limits or the town limits, 251, excuse me, to the Veterans Home, and 154 times to the county area, with five calls to our adjoining city, Napa City. So any major events? The major events that we had will be the next slide. I'm sorry, here is the breakdown of totals, which you can see that the total of medical aids is 70 percent, and that's going to be pretty much normal with the national standard. So we didn't see anything out of the norm outside of the uptick with the traffic collisions. And with that, it's still only 2 percent of our calls, but it is concurrent with the weather conditions that we had. Let me go to the next slide. Okay, so, one thing with the traffic collisions and the winter driving, we did have quite a few accidents, one in which was just outside the town limits, which was a fatality, which was unknown why the reason, but it was caused from a wrong-way driver, which then lends us to drive defensively, pay attention to the road, and if you can, make space between you and the vehicle in front of you. The special events, in January, we start our Volunteer Academy, which includes all nine of our volunteer stations. And then this is the second year that we've also assisted with providing a platform for South Lake County or South Lake Fire Protection District out of Middletown, which is nice because that allows us the ability to leverage some additional inputs and provide a good training standard for everybody. Outside of that, we had our typical hazardous material and technical rescue, boy, excuse me, training and drills as normal. Twice a month, we meet for the hazardous material rescue team out of Station 27, which services the county and the town. And then once a month, our rescue team gets together. We are now working on, for the rescue team, we have some new training that we went through, which is a rescue technician class, which has afforded us some additional skills for people that may be stuck on towers, communication towers, like the cell phone towers and what have you. So now we have the ability to mitigate that and perform those rescues or tree work, et cetera. And that is all I have. Our special message, though, to everybody for the time of year, the one reminder is during the quarter, the change of the quarter, is the time change, so our smoke detectors. And as mentioned with the issues with wildland fires and awareness, is it's that time of year to start taking care of your properties, providing 30-foot clearance if possible, doing some winter maintenance, if you will, debriding the roofs, making sure there's no leaves and debris within the gutter systems, overhanging limbs, and clean the property up. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or additional?
Questions or concerns? Very good. Thank you.
Feel better. Hopefully, quick recovery.
I hope so, too. It's all right. It's just one of those things.
Thank you.
Everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our Sergeant did make his way back in. Okay, now we'll have the Sheriff's Public Safety Quarterly Report.
Sergeant John Hallman with the Napa County Sheriff's Office stationed here in Yountville. Just kind of touching real quick on CAL FIRE, one of the things that's not going to be in the presentation, but we're working together a lot after the fires and some of the incidents we've had over the past few years, constantly working, even today, we had training where their command staff and our command staff work together on communication for major incidents, complicated incidents. How do we communicate? How do we get services to you better, faster? So we are working on that. I'm excited about it. It's always kind of funny because we kind of have jabs at the fire and the Sheriff's Department back and forth a little bit, but it does build camaraderie and relationship and communication. So, if we can go to the next slide. So our calls for service, the first quarter of this year, were 1,302 calls, up just slightly from 869 this same quarter last year. Just slightly is a little joke. Just a slight joke. The reports, we took 54 written investigative reports, and we made eight arrests. Next slide, please. Crimes against person, basically anything from assaults to domestic violence, were slightly down. We had one domestic violence and three simple assaults. And simple assaults can be something from a shoving contest between two people that disagree over a parking space or anything to that effect. It can be pretty simple. Crimes against property, we had four thefts from open unlocked cars in one night, and we had one auto theft. The caveat to these things is the open unlocked cars is literally one event. We took different case numbers because of different victims, but all of them fairly preventable with literally just locking cars and removing items of value that can be seen. The auto theft, we spent quite a bit of time on because it appeared to be probable insurance fraud, and we were able to recover that vehicle, the Sacramento, and get it back. So traffic collisions, you may notice some slightly different numbers. When I'm talking traffic collisions, that's specifically in the Town of Yountville. That doesn't include the outline county area. That's why it says zero injury. And Chief Martin was just talking about a fatality. We were out there, we did assist, we were first on scene on that incident. That one specifically, I will just say kudos to the 17-year-old who was driving the other car with her mother. She did a fantastic job. I have a 17-year-old daughter who's driving as well, and we talked a lot about this. She was able to pay attention. She saw the other driver coming head-on and steered out of his way and probably saved her life and her mom's life. So, great job on her part. We made 156 car stops this last quarter, down about probably 10 from the same quarter last year. Traffic citations were 37, traffic, and 87 parking citations. This quarter, we teamed up, this is something I love, we teamed up with homeless advocacy resources, everything from local code enforcement, Napa County Mental Health, to resolve some different problem issues we had in our community. And it's nice because you're able to sit down with folks, get to know what the issue is, and then work collaboratively with a team and say, "Okay, how can we resolve this? Can we do it through resources?" Whether that's mental health, whether that's maybe just housing, family counseling, or is it going to be something where we actually have to take enforcement? But we're working together, and we have a lot of options. So it's kind of a fun way to handle things. Very happy to announce that we have on-call forensic psychologist. It's Dr. Betty Figaro-Davidson. She responds to the scene, and she's been up in Yountville a fair amount of times where we've been able to call her. She makes time, she comes up literally, whether we're on the street or at someone's home, she will show up, and she takes it to the next level where we may not have that expertise. She helps us kind of carry the ball to the end zone and hopefully get a success for the resident. So that's been really good. Drones have started to pick up, as you probably have noticed within the town. If you, you know, we've had some calls, people are concerned that something's going on or if someone's using it illegally. If there is that concern, feel free to call us. We'll come out, we'll check with the pilot, we'll make sure that they're operating within state law and any guidelines that they need to be operating within, and that it's done safely. Caveat, that's okay, you can stay there. Caveat to the drone thing is that literally today, the Napa County Sheriff's Office actually officially has our licensed drone team, and that is not to scare anybody. How that's going to be heavily used is for like search and rescue or different operations like that. So we're pretty excited about it because for a minor fraction of the cost of using a helicopter, we can get several drones up over an area and start grid searching for somebody and find them very quickly. So, kind of exciting. Safety tip reminder, hopefully you're not getting tired of hearing this because it is still... still needed to be said. Locking our cars, taking items of value out of view and closing our garage doors when we are not present really makes a difference. We had thefts of opportunity this past quarter and could easily, they could have easily been prevented. We want to show the criminals that we are not an easy target, and it seems simple, and it is simple, but it definitely makes a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the sheriff report? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, we're going to move ahead to the first of our two public hearings this evening, and this one, you may have heard of the topic over the last two years. Yountville's envision, Yountville general plan update.
Good evening.
I'll go ahead and, so I don't forget, I'm going to officially open the public hearing now with your staff report, so please.
Well, we are excited to share with you the process and where we've brought this general plan and the changes we've made since we last brought it before you. And we have our consultant team that will walk you through the different parts of this presentation, starting with Christine O'Rourke, who is with O'Rourke and Associates, and we'll finish up with Beth Thompson, who is with De novo.
And before we get started, since it came across when I was reviewing this, one of the reasons I want to make sure all the council had a printed version is when we are making page references, we'll need to do it to the printed version. The digital version we have, because it's segmented by chapters, those don't always line up. So if we need to reference that, that's what we'll use. So welcome back.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and members of the council. Really excited to be here tonight, hopefully on the evening of adopting the general plan. Could I have the next slide, please? So I am going to be kicking off the staff presentation, and my role here is to just kind of go over, do a brief overview of how we got here, how we've developed the general plan. Then it's going to go back to Sandra, and she's going to talk about the major changes that were made to the draft general plan. So these are, we're really going to be focusing on the changes that were made since we released the public draft back in October. We went through a long process, which I'll talk about, and we made, we have a bunch of revisions that were made. Those are in a matrix that were called revisions to the draft general plan. So we're going to be kind of talking about some of the major changes. They're not in any particular order. We can take the, all of the changes in order later on if the council wants to walk through all of the changes. We're just going to focus on the major changes. And then after that, Beth De novo, Beth Thompson, excuse me, from De novo Planning Group, our environmental consultant, is going to give an overview of the environmental impact report. And then, then I'll talk later on about the rest of the agenda and how we think we might best structure this for reviewing the draft. So how did we create the draft general plan? Well, we went through a few different phases. Our first phase, we're calling the listening phase, and this is when we had five speaker series. This was over the course of the first half of 2017. And the speaker series focused on things of, kind of things, issues of concern or of interest to the community. We had speaker series on agricultural preservation, on balancing the needs of the tourism industry and maintaining quality of life here in Yountville, also about circulation as well. So we really, we had a panel of experts at all of these series, and it was an opportunity for the community to kind of listen to the experts and understand, get some really good context around what issues and challenges there are, there are for the town, and also for all of us to kind of listen to each other and listen to the community and what they really valued and wanted to see preserved in the community, as well as what they saw as challenges or opportunities for change. We then moved into our second phase, which was the longest phase, drafting the general plan. And this started off when the council appointed an 11-member town advisory group. We met with the town advisory group 10 times over the course of the year. And during each of those meetings, we would kind of delve into a different topic area of the general plan. We wanted to understand, we reviewed a lot of background material, we wanted to understand the trends that were happening. We looked at the existing general plan and the existing policies to see what we wanted to keep, what we wanted to change, and what new policies we wanted and programs we wanted to craft. So during that year, we had three community workshops. The first one was more general nature, and then the second two, we really started drilling down on different land use opportunities. So we were looking at potential change areas, trying to find out what the community wanted. So we were taking all of that information and combining that into the draft as we were creating that document. We also had a presentation with the Veterans Home because we wanted to be sure that we heard from our veterans and included their point of view in the document. We had three meetings with the zoning and design review board, one with Parks and Rec Commission, and also three town council meetings, two of those were study sessions. So during this time, we were kind of presenting different ideas, different things that we were exploring, just to make sure we were getting feedback and we were getting anything that the community or the different boards wanted to have addressed in the general plan. Then in October, we released our draft general plan, and that started the third, the third phase of reviewing the draft general plan. We also had a community open house in October, and that was a really well-attended community house, open house. As you may recall, we had stations set around the room, and those were arranged by different topic area. And we had pulled out some of the most, probably the more maybe controversial or interesting policies that are in the general plan. There were 40, there were 33 policy options that we highlighted, and we put them on what we call feedback boards, and then the community members could put red or green dots next to show their support or their disapproval of a policy that was in the general plan. We got up to 46 policy responses for each policy option. We also duplicated those policy options in an online survey, and we got another 44 responses per, up to that, per policy option. So we were taking that feedback, and we next brought it to the boards and commissions. We went to the Art Commission, the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and Designing and Design Review Board, so that they had an opportunity to review the draft as well as review the input that we had received from the community open house and that online survey. And then we took all of that information and we brought it forward to the town council for final direction. So we were making changes, little tweaks and other changes to the draft as we went through this process. We then kind of went dark for a little while and made all of the revisions to the draft, produced a new document. We also had our environmental consultant prepare the final environmental impact report during this time. And then we are now in our final phase of adopting the plan. So we brought the draft to the ZDRB in April. We had two meetings with the ZDRB, actually. At the first meeting in April 9th, they had quite a few changes, and there's, there is also a document, one of the attachments in, to the staff report that is a response to the ZDRB comments that had been brought up during that meeting. So we made some more changes to the draft, and we, just to try to be cleanly incorporated those into the draft plan that was included as Exhibit A. So that's where we are now, and I think now Sandra is going to take over to review the major changes that were made to the public review draft that had been released in October of 2018. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's right. So I will be sharing with you the changes to the first public draft that was released at the open house, and it includes feedback from the boards and the commissions and the council, and some of the more recent changes that we received from the ZDRB on this last trip before then in April. So many of the changes are for formatting and corrections and editing for clarity that helped the document read well and that ensure that references are consistent and it, so that it is a quality document that we can stand by. When we took it to the Arts Commission in November, they provided feedback for a change in one policy and one program as it relates to arts and culture in Yountville, and that's detailed on the matrix that you have of the changes. We also presented it to the zoning and design review board back in December of 2018 and more recently in April, and we received quite a number of proposed edits that we've included in the document and spelled out specifically. When we brought the document before the town council in December, we received the feedback that is listed here. One of those items was to add an executive summary that serves as an introduction to the greater document, and it includes such items as what has changed since the 1992 general plan. And those are really the four change areas that I'll go into greater detail shortly. We also included how the general plan will shape Yountville's future, and we have, we mentioned many different goals, some of which include limiting growth and preserving the quality of life for residents and maintaining the community's character. We also included in that executive summary how the general plan responds to state law and what we're obligated to change and keep current. We added a new discussion or an expanded discussion of home-based businesses on page 47 that is more responsive to the types of businesses we, that residents may wish to conduct in the future. And we also added, removed a detailed discussion of the Veterans Home Facilities Master Plan on page 89, and that is to focus instead on the town's desire to partner with the Veterans Home and work with them where we have a joint interest that we can achieve, say, housing, but we've taken out specifics as to the number of beds that the Veterans Home may build or the number of housing units that may be appropriate in that facilities master plan with the understanding that that, that plan is bound to change over time. So some of the changes that we made to the general plan are in regards to view corridors. And we understood through this process is that there is some misunderstanding as to what a view corridor is. View corridors don't preserve all views throughout town or specific views from property, but they're really defined as protecting the view at the terminus of a street. So we clarified that on page 138, and we've included the following revised text, that view corridors protect the view that exists when looking down a specified street in the direction shown in figure OS 2, which is the figure here. They are not intended to protect views from particular properties. In effect, the view corridor prevents a home or building from being built directly across the terminus of a street. And then we also added the photos that you see here for each of the view corridors to give an idea of the types of views of hills and sky and vegetation that view corridors are intended to preserve. We made changes to the draft general plan as it relates to the conceptual design sketches that we had included in each of the four change areas. And we emphasized that these development sketches were conceptual design ideas only. They do not represent approved concepts or designs for the property, but rather they describe what may be possible. And we included a new paragraph on page 58 that reads as follows, "The four areas described below are accompanied by conceptual sketches and photos that are intended to illustrate certain design concepts and a sense of what may be possible on these sites. The town will need to take further action, such as amending the zoning ordinance and design standards, before development proposals could be considered. An interested property owner could then submit an application, and the zoning and design review board, as applicable to town council then, would then review the project." And that's to further describe what the process is. We all know that the general plan is a higher-level policy document, but our work will not stop there. We will then come back before the ZDRB with a recommendation and the council for a decision on many of the different zoning and design ordinance amendments that will follow this general plan. And because it's a bifurcated process, the next step would be to allow an applicant to act on those revised design standards. And all of that will take some time, but it'll be an effort that we jump into after adoption of the general plan. And we also removed two illustrations that may have shown heavier density development than is appropriate for Yountville, and we changed the remaining sketches to black and white on pages 60 and 61. And this is all in that effort to ensure that these are truly designed conceptual images rather than approved development. And I think before moving on, it's important to note that in the narrative sections of the general plan, we're using both the conceptual sketches and the narrative to try to put some level of boundary or definition on these four change areas. And I'll go into a little more detail when I discuss the four change areas, but that's to help the council when we move forward. We've identified certain things that are important, certain items of development that want to be retained, and, and that's what that narrative, what those narrative sections are intended to do. So I'll start next with the first change area, which is downtown west of Washington Street.
Before you get into the four real meaty areas here, can we, or do you feel like we need to talk further through the attachment that is the revisions to the draft general plan that lists all these by page? And it seems like a lot of this is, as you were saying, either for continuity of language or relatively straightforward changes slash corrections? Is this something you'd like us to comment on now, or this is just support information that will play out in other conversation?
This is support information that describes the more major changes. We're going through the major changes in this presentation, but we do have everything listed in the matrix if you'd like to slow down and go through them one at a time.
No, I don't want to go through them one at a time, absolutely not. We'll make it a third year. We have two, what we're calling matrices, as I see it. One is of comments made either through public comment by email or council comments. The other one is the one that's an attachment, a 16-page attachment, 18-1960 revisions. And I just didn't know if the council had any specific call-outs in that document that need attention. I think it's mostly minor, and it's all basically been vetted. I just happened to catch that we might be missing one photographer's name, but Bob McLennahan may very well have some images in here that hasn't been listed.
So I'll continue to go through the more major changes, but then let's also take a step back and just glance at that matrix, make sure we haven't missed anything. They are more minor in nature and they're for clarity and for better reading of the product, and these are really the big ones that change concepts.
Yeah, so let's get to those change areas. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the first change area is downtown west of Washington Street, and the first revision that we made was to reduce the area for a potential third-story bonus to what is seen here in this figure LU 1. And what we did was we pulled the southern boundary of that district from California on the north up to Mulberry. So we see it between Humboldt and Mulberry. And what that did was to take out the vineyard at the corner of California and Washington, which won't be developed, it's held as open space and is required to for the vintage estate properties. And we've also removed the Hotel Velagio. We've also made it clear that the study area includes, or the change area includes, the west side of the highway, and that is the wine train property that you see there. We've also identified that the three-story height should be no taller than the peak of the V Marketplace roof line, and that is the roof line rather than the cupolas that you see. And, and so with that in mind, I wanted to further describe the design intent that we see in the narrative sections of the general plan, and I will quote from certain pages. On page 58, we note the importance of development being well-designed, of fitting in with a small-town character of Yountville, and being pedestrian-oriented with gathering spaces. And these are all elements that we heard as being important from the community at the workshops and the open house, so we've called those out specifically. On page 60, we identify that new development would need to blend in with the character and scale of surrounding buildings and preserve view corridors down designated streets to really call attention to the fact that it should be unique to its space and not a more generic building that might fit in another community. We also state that three-story elements should be no higher than the peak of the V Marketplace roof. And to assist us in this effort, we hired a land surveyor to conduct a topo study of the property, the V Marketplace property. And what we learned is that the hip roof line of V Marketplace is at about 35 feet, and that is five feet taller than the current two-story height limit of 30 feet. And we know that that is lower than your more typical three-story building, but it can accommodate three stories with different design techniques being taken into consideration. And it's a little harder, but it can be done. We also measured the height of the cupolas and the rear brick parapet. We find that both of those are at 40 feet, and those are simply shared as a point of reference. We measured the height of the third-floor roof line at Maison Fleurie, and it's at about 32 and a half feet. So these numbers are helpful. So these numbers are helpful in understanding when we refer to the height of the V Marketplace roof, what type of three-story building we'll be working in, in the next phase when we update the zoning and design ordinance. We further indicate in the general plan that the building should be stepped back and located toward the center of the development off Washington to ensure an appropriate transition to adjacent development and to avoid flat, vertical planes and three-story development fronting the street. And we added that language because we heard from the public that they didn't want to see a developed environment like St. Helena where tall buildings are directly at back of sidewalk, that it had to fit the Yountville aesthetic. And that meant that it was tucked further in, that it employed step-back, second and third stories and different techniques to break up that mass. So the second point here relates more to uses, and we revised policy LU two-point-five to consider providing a third-story bonus for projects that provide underrepresented retail rather than non-food and wine retail. And the way that reads, that bonus for the use, is that it can be granted to a development located within, as shown on this figure, to the area shown on the figure, on the condition that the project and its uses provide a community benefit such as affordable housing, underrepresented retail, standalone office, or services. And the idea between this third-story bonus or incentive is that the community gets something that we're not otherwise getting. It's an underrepresented use. We moved away from the language that that was food or wine-related because we know that uses change over time. And if we look back to ninety-two, when the general plan was adopted, one could argue there was an overrepresentation of antique stores. Today, one might argue there's an overrepresentation of food and wine. That's bound to change over time, and we wanted to build flexibility into the general plan to allow the council to decide what are those underrepresented or overrepresented uses. Okay, so I'm moving on now to change area two, which are the two vacant parcels on Humboldt Street. And we've removed a prohibition on alcohol-related and restaurant uses on these parcels. And that's basically because full-service restaurants and wine bars and bars are already prohibited in the RSC zoning district, but that a lower-intensity use might be appropriate. And we heard from the property owner that he may like to do something like a soda fountain within a pharmacy. And this change in language preserves this option and allows the council to review a project on a case-by-case basis. We've also gone through different iterations of what requirements should apply to the two second-floor housing units that will be required of this rezone. And we started out with language that they should be non-owner-occupied rentals. But upon hearing from the property owner at the ZDRB's meeting in April, and their concern that they may wish to move into one of those units as a permanent, long-term resident, we have residents, we've changed the language to allow one of the units to be owner-occupied with a use permit. And again, the language for this change area includes some of the ideas that further define what the town would like to see or expect as part of future development of this site. And the general plan describes how the design should be oriented toward the corner, as you see here in this illustration, with the parking behind and access from Humboldt Street. And those three items of orientation are called out in an attempt to protect the adjoining residential neighborhood. And it's similar to treatment that we've used in the RSC district further south on Washington where property is about residential. The general plan states that an appropriate buffer to adjoining residential properties would be required to mitigate potential impacts, including light and noise. And some of the options that would be available would be to build an eight-foot-tall, sound-attenuating wall, to require that parking lot lights are at a level no higher than the top of the wall, and that consideration be given to windows and balconies on the second floor to preserve adjoining residents' privacy and other impacts. We've also included language in the narrative section of the general plan that the scale and design must complement surrounding buildings and utilize design features to break up building mass, such as modulate, such as building modules, partial upper stories, step-back upper stories, and use of balconies, awnings, and a variety of use forms. And these are really pulled out of the design guidelines for the RSC district, but they're identified here as important considerations should this property develop with commercial uses in the future. The third change area are the six residential parcels on North Washington, and these are the last six residential parcels. At one point, the Old Town Historic District continued from the Heston property on the south end of Washington all the way up to Madison. And over the years, the Old Town Historic District has been rezoned. For example, immediately to the north of the subject parcels, they were rezoned to Old Town Commercial immediately south of the subject parcels. Those with the French Laundry and Bordeaux House were rezoned to retained-use Commercial. And further south with Gates Estates and, and Heston, and with the proposed Humboldt rezone before you tonight, we see the rezone to RSC. So it shows the changing nature of Washington Street. And how we've approached this is to change the program LU six-point-two-A to create an overlay district rather than create a rezoning. And the reason that that is important is that it would allow the residents in these six homes to maintain them as purely residential structures for the indefinite future if that's how they wish to use the property. But it opens up an opportunity should they want to do some, add in a component of retail. We've also changed the prohibition against non-alcohol retail to underrepresented retail, which is a change that we've carried through the entire document in order to provide that flexibility over time. And the important point to make is that in allowing a mixed use, including live-work, office, service, and underrepresented retail uses, that those would be in addition to the residential uses on-site. So it's different from the rezoning for the other parcels.
Yes.
I noticed in the, in the updated version that we have, when I was reading it, I read that you said that the housing was required on the Humboldt properties, but it didn't, oh, I'm sorry, but it didn't say that housing is required in those six parcels on the north end of, of Washington Street. And I was wondering, is that what you meant? Or, you know, are they allowed to say it's either-or, or isn't it, doesn't it have to be housing and work, you know, it has to be?
So the requirement in the program is that you can do these additional uses in addition to the retail, I mean, to the residential, that the residential is a required component, but that the-
Well, it just doesn't say required, but, and as it does with the Humboldt properties where, when they develop that, they, it does say required. And so I thought that might be something that we might want to think about adding in order to just be clear.
Okay. It could be something as simple as that these other uses are in addition to existing required residential uses.
Yeah, there's no question. I think the council's intent, and I think all the other conversations, we're not losing any residential units if there's any change.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Moving on to the last of the four change areas, we come to Vista Condominiums. And we added text to explain that the homeowners' association would also need to decide whether or not to allow the two-story. And that is provided as an additional sentence that states if the master plan is amended, the Vista Condominium homeowners' association would still need to decide whether to permit two-story construction. And what this does is it provides an opportunity for the homeowners' association and then individual homeowners to make these changes if they're so inclined. It takes away the prohibition on behalf of the town. It doesn't require it. It doesn't force homeowners to do that. It creates an opportunity.
I'm going to take this opportunity to repeat that, that you mentioned earlier, we're not preapproving anything in terms of development projects. We are looking at opportunities to potentially allow categories to be considered in areas. I think this is a very good example that I think there's an inappropriate concern by a few folks that think we're now saying Vista can and should build two stories everywhere. That's not at all what we're saying. And we're not saying those six parcels on Washington Street have to become commercial uses as well as residential. We're just offering opportunities in response to residents that have said, we'd like to see more retail spaces. Okay, well, here's a way we can do that. And we'd like to get more residential unit flexibility with small add-on living areas. Okay, these are areas we can consider doing that. But just every ten minutes, we probably need to say we are not preapproving projects and all of the regular processes need to go through for permits and, and other approvals.
That is absolutely right. This document provides the opportunity. These things may never happen, but we also need to consider that the general plan is a document that has a life of twenty years. So we're trying to plan ahead for any number of changes. These are the only four changes that you see in this general plan update for the most part. Everything says true, true to the qualities and, and relationships that people like here about Yountville.
I'll also just remind folks that there are two dead-end intersections between the Heritage Estates neighborhood and, why am I completely blanking on the next door? Torrey on Terrace, that was in, that was in the general plan, that they would be opened up for local traffic thoroughfares. They are still dead-end streets. And so that's an example of something that's put in a plan as a possibility for future consideration, and it never happened because the community didn't support it.
Yes, good example. All right, I am nearly done here. Let's see, moving on to the next slide. Two more changes to share with you. So in response to the zoning and design review board's discussion of floor-area ratio as it would apply to the agricultural zoning designation, we've proposed sort of a range of intensities. And the general plan originally had proposed, and does here, an FAR of point-zero-five coverage, which is very small in consideration to a normal commercial development, which is about twenty-five percent. However, the ZDRB raised that on the large agricultural parcels where you might have a thirty-acre parcel, point-o-five is really a very significant amount of development. So we've added a new paragraph to explain that the maximum densities and intensities identified in table LU two are an upper limit and are not guaranteed. Maximum densities and intensities for zoning districts may be established at a lower threshold in the town zoning code. Residential density and building intensity on any site shall respond to site, resources, and constraints, neighborhood context, potentially hazardous conditions, sensitive environmental conditions, traffic and access, adequacy of infrastructure, and town design policies in order to provide some flexibility to, to lower that FAR should we decide that's more important moving forward and to clarify that. The last really major change is that we've updated a discussion of future roadway conditions to reflect EIR findings. Those are shown on page one-eleven. They're taken from the EIR, and I won't go into them specifically. So before I move on, I did want to share that we have received two letters from members of the public. One is from Eric Knight, who was the chair of the town advisory group, and the other is from Hopper Creek Village Homeowners Association. And in response to letters received, I created the document that is in each of your seats on the dais, and it's called Requested Revisions to the Draft Yountville General Plan. Unfortunately, I was not able to include the Hopper Creek comments because they were received late in the day, but I do want to go through all of these really quickly. So in the letter from Eric Knight, he recommends that we make some changes to, in reference to the agricultural lands, and that we use the word retain rather than preserve or protect. And that was our intent. We've gone ahead and made most of those changes. He caught some that we had missed, and so we are recommending that we do those for clarity. I do have, he is suggesting that we change housing element language on page ninety-two of the general plan, and staff does not recommend that we make those changes. And the reason is that the California State Department of Housing and Community Development certifies the town's housing element as being compliant with state law. That housing element has an eight-year term, and it's good through the year 2022. We don't want to make changes to that that would trigger a new review by HCD and require additional certification where they could then look at any of the other housing policies. But we do think it's important to pin both of these issues that he's noted and review those when we do the next housing element update in 2022 for adoption in 2023. He also is suggesting that we strike the language that the three-area third-story bonus not being permitted on the west side of Highway twenty-nine between Humboldt Street and California Drive. But we believe that's a more significant change that may not have full community support, and that is because we identified the west side of the highway as part of the three-story bonus when we took the discussion to the tag in January of 2018, to the ZDRB in February of 2018, to the town council again in February of 2018, and then to the open house in 2018. And while there's not universal support for a three-story, it was something that was discussed amongst the groups, and that's why you see the three-story bonus for those areas in the general plan. We received comments from council member Muller, who is also the past chair of the LAFCO Commission, and her concerns relate generally to the use of farmland, where she would like to see it changed to agricultural land. And that's because this is a term adopted by LAFCO and is better understood in relation to the agricultural preserve. We support the changes where they're noted here. I do note that on page one-forty of the general plan, we're not changing farmland as it relates to designations from the California Department of Conservation because those are defined terms of art, so they should stay as such. And we're also not suggesting that we change farmland where it's prime farmland, which is USDA definition in the programs for potential annexation of Domain Chandon. In those, in that program, we're using both the prime farmland designation, which is USDA, as I mentioned, and prime agricultural land to provide greater definition for those. The final suggested recommendations come from Vice Mayor Dorman, and that is that we should recognize those council members that served as vice mayor during the course of this update, and that includes both council member Muller and council member Doranbecker, and we support that as well. We, we noted that there were three zoning and design review board members that were heavily involved in the process and gave feedback and direction, but they no longer sit on the boards, so we're suggesting we include their names as well. In this matrix, we've also listed all of the former members of the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission and the Yountville Arts Commission that sat on those commissions during this general plan update. But we do note in the staff response that only the current boards heard and provided feedback on the draft general plan because we took it to them on one occasion. So that's a discussion item, whether to include everybody, which we certainly can, or to focus on the members that had a direct impact. And as I mentioned, what's not included in there is that letter from the Hopper Creek Village Homeowners Association objecting to the two-story height at Vista Condominiums. We don't have suggested language for revision there. And if this is something that the council wishes to move forward with, this may necessitate a continuance to come back before you. But with the other changes, we're hoping if you want to make any of them, you can simply include them in your motion tonight. I'll now turn it back over to Beth Thompson.
Before we do that, I think we've gone a long time before we've had any questions from council, if we have any. Does or, Durham? Can you get on the microphone, please?
Oh, so Nathan created that map for us to give better context into how far the Vista condos units are separated from Hopper Creek Association. And I believe that is a distance of about a hundred and sixty-five feet, separated, of course, by Hopper Creek and all the churches.
The letter was submitted by the association. The graphic was our staff.
Yes.
Any other questions of Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Before I begin, Mayor, I have some somewhat specific questions on some of the change areas. Do you want to do that now? Is that the kind of questions you're seeking, or do you want me to hold those?
Sandra, do you want to get into the details of the change areas yet? I, I'd like to get through-
Yeah, maybe we should finish.
-the matrix at least, if we can deal with these items and check that off. And then if we need to get into, I would say, questions, not trying to change the language of the change- And check that off. And then if we need to get into, I would say, questions, not trying to change the language of the change areas. We're still getting the staff report. We want to hear from the public. So if there are, let's get through the matrix, the requested revisions. If we have no questions, great, we'll move on. Uh, if we have questions of the staff report on change areas, I'll entertain that. Now, getting into details of content changes, we're going to hold off. So the printed out, and I don't want to keep calling it matrix because we've got this document here. I think we all understand what we're talking about. Are there questions or comments about this beyond what, uh, Sandra has said? Changes have already been incorporated or reasons why they are not going to be incorporated? Any question or discussion about any of that? Okay, check that off. Uh, you've noted the public comments from the homeowners association and Mr. Knight, certainly during the rest of public comment, either or both of those, positions can be presented. So questions of the staff report as it relates to the change areas? Vice Mayor, did you have questions?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. And before I begin, I would like to say, um, Director Liston and everyone else who had a hand in this, every time I read this, and it's about five times now, I, I can't begin to fathom the amount of work you put into it, and I, I really, really so appreciate it. So thank you to you all. I had a question about the, um, hold on, I gotta find my question. I have a lot of little pieces of paper here. Where it talks about the FAR bonus that might be available for the three stories, there are two pieces of that, and one of them seems to me that it could apply to any building, even our currently allowed two stories. And there is another piece of it that seems to apply only to three stories. Is that how you sort of had it set up in your mind? As you structured it through the document?
The idea is that the three-story bonus may be allowed if a project provides these uses, and these uses are not obligated to go on the three-story. They have to be included somehow in the development at, um, a level that truly is a benefit, um, rather than a token item. So there's a lot of flexibility still as to where that, um, that type of development goes, um, that we will further flush out as part of the zoning and design ordinance update. It may be that the council only wants the three, um, that the bonus uses have to go on the third story, or that they can't be distributed more evenly through the development. That's still sort of an unanswered question. It's more that it's available, provided we create some standards and a project meets those standards.
So we're going to have two pieces of the FAR bonus. One will be for what we kind of have existing, a two-story that has office or?
No, I think it would be one, one set of standards. Sorry, yeah.
So we're going to conflate the two-story and three-story, and whatever we do will be the same for both. But the three-story will only be able to take advantage of it if it has the certain uses.
Right.
I think that'd be correct when we put it in the clarifying language. It would be one approach or the other. If you're using the existing FAR bonus, then you're subject to the two-story height limit. If you want to, can be considered for the three-story, it would be this set of rules.
Did I also hear in your question, though, that you're asking if it need new development versus existing? If somebody wanted to add a story to a one- or two-story building to get to three? And would that in fact trigger the same?
I hadn't thought of that, but yes, I think that's a good question.
Oh, I thought that's what you thought of. Oh, wait.
That's what I thought, too.
Does that?
It would apply to a, a two-story building adding a third-story structure or a, um, a piece of raw land that's developed as three-story.
But we want to clarify really quick, only in that very, very limited area. So when people are thinking of the three-story heights, we want to remind everybody it's a very small area, and it, we're only talking about buildings or vacant land in that footprint, not townwide.
Other questions? Any other questions of the change areas so far in the report? Okay, I think we're going to transition.
And we'll move on to Beth Thompson to, to present to you the environmental review.
And we will, sorry, have an opportunity for anyone in the public that wants to ask questions or comment after we get through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Beth Thompson with DeNobbo Planning Group, and I'm really excited to be here at the culmination of this, this process. So the general plan update is considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, which is CEQA. And so because it's a project under the Environmental Qual-, California Environmental Quality Act, a draft EIR, an environmental impact report, was prepared to analyze the potential physical impacts of the project on the environment. So if the general plan update was built out, what would happen to the environment? So it looks at 16 different topic areas. Oh, and I'm, let me follow the slides here. So at the outset of the process, we held a scoping meeting and a notice of preparation was prepared to let the community know that an EIR was being prepared for the general plan update project. And that invited the public and interested agencies to comment on the scope of the environmental impact reports. So the information that would be provided in the impact report, they could suggest alternatives to the general plan update project, and they could suggest potential mitigation measures. The draft EIR considered input provided during the scoping process, and it was released in November of 2018 for a 45-day public review period. That public review period was extended and ended up ending in February of 2019. So during the course of public review, three comment letters were provided on the draft EIR. None of these comment letters indicated any deficiencies in the draft EIR. None of them required any recirculation of the draft EIR. So there were no changes made to the draft EIR, but the final EIR provides a response to those comments. Next slide. So the draft EIR looks at all of the topics required to be analyzed under CEQA. And in those topic areas, the majority of potential environmental impacts associated with development that could be accommodated under the general plan update were less than significant. The general plan is a self-mitigating document, meaning rather than having mitigation measures in the draft EIR, the goals, policies, and action, action items included in the city's or the town's general plan all assist in mitigating potential environmental impacts. So you don't have an EIR with a separate set of mitigation measures. You have a general plan that has all of the mitigation incorporated into the document. So with the application of the policies and programs in the general plan, there were only four areas where there were significant unavoidable impacts. And that means that with the application of mitigation, those impacts were not reduced to a less than significant level. And those are related to the conversion of important farmlands, temporary and periodic increases in ambient noise levels associated with construction activities. And then looking at the performance of traffic at the intersection of State Route 29 and Madison Street under both current and future conditions. So no, no additional mitigation measures were required, as I, as I had mentioned. In addition to looking at the impacts of the project, the EIR looked at three alternatives that could potentially reduce the environmental impacts associated with a project. And in developing the alternatives, we focused on looking at changes to the general plan that would avoid or reduce the significant unavoidable impacts associated with a project. So the first alternative, alternative A, reduces the floor area ratio that was associated with the agricultural land use designation. So that would be reduced from a floor area ratio of .05 to .01 in reducing the development potential on agricultural lands, which would in turn reduce potential traffic impacts, air quality impacts, and noise impacts, and impacts associated with visual changes to the agricultural lands. The second alternative, alternative B, looked at limiting development west of Washington Street to a two-story limit. And then also in the south area of town, reducing the development potential of the, um, approximately 12 acres, so church-owned property, and limiting that development to a smaller four-and-a-half acre portion of the site. So under that alternative, you would have less residential development. But then you would have, because you now have more agricultural land, you would have an increase in the potential non-residential development. So the EIR addresses both of those alternatives. And then it also looked at a no-project alternative, which is continuation of your current general plan. In your reports, or in your packet tonight, you have a document called a Findings of Fact and Statement of Overriding Considerations. And so for each of these significant unavoidable impacts associated with the project, and for each of the alternatives, there's a discussion of the benefits of the project and the reason why the project is appropriate to approve despite the drawbacks of the significant unavoidable impacts. And then why the, the council might wish to not choose to approve those alternatives, but rather to approve the project as proposed. So if you have any questions regarding the EIR, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council? No. There you go. Thank you very much. We're going to try to keep the momentum going.
Okay, well, this is the last slide. Um, but it sounds like you've already kind of decided how you want to handle the review, the final review. So as you've already discovered, there is this, um, there's this one matrix, the revisions made to the public review draft general plan, which it sounds like you don't want to go over line by line. Uh, but if there's, are any other changes, so, so far, I've noticed, um, I've noted that there are two changes. One, which is to change the word existing to required in, in program LU 6.2A about the North Washington, um, overlay district. And then it sounds like there might be another change about adding a photographer's name. So we can just, I'll be sitting here just kind of keeping track of all the changes that you want to make so that if you want to approve, uh, adopt the general plan tonight with these changes, um, and also the changes that were in this requested revisions to that, which you've already talked about and, and have agreed upon making those changes.
Yeah, I, I don't know for a fact, uh, regarding the photographer, but Bob McLennahan has been under contract with the chamber for over a year, a couple of years. And, um, I'd be very surprised if some of his images are not included in this. I just don't know the origin of all of the photography.
Okay.
Uh, we list some photographers, uh, from many years ago. So, uh, wouldn't want to leave out the one guy that continues to provide images to the town.
Okay, so we will, we will check on that and add that if, um, appropriate.
Thank you. Are there other, um, elements in here that any council members have, uh, flagged as asking questions or challenging? Could you highlight again just the, the one that you called out? Give us the page so that we can find the actual, uh, strike-through language or additional language.
Sure. So this is on, um, it's page 79.
So that would be of this document. Page eight? No. I'm not seeing a page 79 change here.
So this is the one that you're talking about making to the, to program LU 6.2A?
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the document that I thought you were referencing here, the revisions to the draft general plan, not, not the requested revision.
Oh, to the revision. Okay, so that one, yes, we can do it that way, too. That's, so that's page eight of the matrix revisions made to the public review draft general plan.
As it relates to what page in the actual general plan?
And so in the actual general plan, it's page 79.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not seeing it here on this document. Maybe I'm looking at two different documents.
So, um, I can just, I can read it. Should I do that? Okay. So, um, it says LU 6.2A, North Washington. Create an overlay district to allow mixed use, including live-work, office, service, and underrepresented retail uses in addition to, and here's the change, it says existing residential uses, and we'll change that existing to required. So create an overlay district to allow mixed use, including live-work, office, service, and underrepresented retail uses in addition to required residential uses. And apply the new district to the six residential parcels on the east side of North Washington as shown in figure LU2.
Okay, finally got through to me why it's not here because we just came up with it tonight verbally. Okay. I got it. It only took me three times.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
I actually have a question that relates to the EIR. I'm so sorry, but, um, as I was going through, and maybe this is just the process, and hopefully you can clarify me, to me, the process. Because I noticed in the CEQA findings, one of the findings was about alternative B. And alternative B was developed to reduce impacts associated with aesthetics, agricultural resources, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, public services. This alternative would decrease the residential growth potential by 54 dwelling units and would increase the non-residential growth potential by 26,523 square feet associated with the development of land designated agricultural. And I was wondering, as shown in ta-, this table, this alternative could accommodate up to 177 residential units, including 44 single-family and 133 multifamily, mixed-use live-work, and up to 196,000 of non-residential uses. And I was wondering, is this something that is going, i- is, uh, a viable alternative that we are going to discuss? Or has this already been adjudicated and we don't have any say over it?
I think you said 196,000. You didn't mean 196,000, I don't think.
196,000 square feet. Sorry.
There you go, not units. Okay.
So the alternatives are presented for the town council's consideration, and these findings are developed based on the anticipation that you would want to proceed with the project as proposed. If you wanted to approve one of these alternatives or consider some other iteration of the project, we would then revise the findings appropriately. But the project, the general plan update, was developed through an iterative process. So for a number of areas in the town, you looked at a huge, you know, at a range of development opportunities. So by the time you get to the proposed project that's being analyzed in the EIR, you've already ratcheted it down a lot, and you'd already looked at some potential issues that could result in environmental impacts and had removed those from the proposed project so that the general plan itself reflected the vision of the town. So the reason we anticipated that these alternatives would be discarded was because the project, as it's proposed, has been developed to address the concerns heard from the community, the desire and vision of the town. So that, that's the reason for that language.
I see.
You, you're obligated to throw every option that's reasonable in this document. And I think what you just were saying is, even though you've heard little or no support of, of advancing those, but it's your obligation to include them.
An EIR must include alternatives that reduce potential impacts.
And, and to be fair, it does say the findings were that alternative B was rejected. But I was just curious because it sounded like the, you know, um, developing less agricultural land was of interest to me, but since it's already been, been.
But I, I'm gonna, I know Steve wants to talk about this one. He's been quiet longer than the council has. But I think if I'm correct, Steve, we're talking about, we have made a priority of housing development on the parcel, not commercial retail development, which is one of the options that the EIR addressed. Is that accurate?
No.
Okay, then go ahead, start talking.
You're talking about the Pulissa property in a good portion, and the analysis, the community and the council conversation was not to proceed with any, um, development on that particular property.
Good, thank you. That's, that's what I was sort of getting at.
It's reflecting the policy decisions as she was talking about. We went through there. That is still one option, especially, but if you recall, that was, a- at this point, especially given the fact that the town has an approved housing element for a number of years. You've heard Sandra and I raise a red flag, which is we may have some different conversations as a community in 2023, 24, based on what state law may be then, but the, the consensus and direction of the community process and the council was to not move forward with looking at that property, continue to keep it as agriculture, and to put energy into working on, uh, development at the Veterans Home, and also potentially the property at the south end of town that is already zoned multifamily residential.
Thank you. That clarifies it for me.
And I do think it's important to highlight what Steve just said, which is, we have two different zoning areas. They just happen to both be planted to vine. With the Catholic Church property is already zoned for housing development. The northeast corner property is not. It's zoned for agriculture, even though it's in the town limits.
That is correct.
That makes a very clear distinction of the different ways to look at those two different parcels.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We went back to EIR. Where are we? Who's talking? Do we have any more official presentation, or is that it? Okay. Last chance for questions now before we invite the public. Okay, anybody here like to comment on this? Or are you just, uh, here for the? The, yeah, the cupcakes. Yeah, the cupcakes. Yeah, we will. Three. Yeah, we'll, we'll have our three-minute clock running. Really, that's used to make sure that everybody in the audience has a chance to speak. It's not gonna, we're not gonna necessarily have a bell ring and make you sit down, but please don't monopolize the microphone, so we could all speak. Go ahead, Pam.
Pam Reeve, 6887 Jefferson Street. I just wanted to talk a little bit about aesthetics and visual resources and the degradation of the vistas and the visual character of town, which is some language that comes from the CEQA findings. And I would like to agree with Eric Knight about reconsidering the idea of three-story overlay for that west side of Washington Street and including the opposite side of the freeway where the wine train tracks are. The idea that this council can predict what the next council will consider as underrepresented retail, and whether or not the property owners will actually create what we would like to see is a very big question. It's not to their advantage to create workforce housing or low-income housing unless we force them to. But beyond that, a three-story wall on either the west side of 29 or on the west side of Washington Street would impair what we see as, as Yountville. And I think if you go down south on 29 and you see the development of three-story buildings in front of Justin Sienna High School, you will see what a big visual impact three stories makes, even if you're just driving in a, an area that is sort of mixed use, and it's off the highway a bit, but it's still impressive. And for my part, I would not like to see, we used to say, the caramelization of Yountville. Now I think we're talking about the Disney-ization of Yountville with the idea that possible for the wine train to build a three-story hotel on their property. There are rumors that they want to build hotels all the way up. Is this tomorrow land for us? I don't know. But I think it behooves us to maybe use some more subjective language. When you say an FAR bonus, that feels like that's a lure, and I feel like we could consider an FAR adjustment, but not consider a third story. There is parking lot availability, and yes, I'm assuming that most people don't like parking lots. But the idea of three stories is not Yountville. Yes, we have two buildings in town that are three stories, but they're special. This idea that we'll get what we want from a developer is not really valid. We have not had that happen in the past. A few developers have done it, but overall, not so much. They push the edge of the envelope, and they don't give you what you thought they were going to give you. So to leave that so open, and also underrepresented retail, I mean Tiffany's jeweler could be underrepresented in Yountville. I, I don't understand that language as tightening up anything. And I have heard on the council a number of times about resident-serving business, but if we don't say it, we're never going to get it. So resident-oriented, local-oriented businesses would be preferable, because that's what we want. And if we don't ask for it, we're not going to get it. And I, I feel like not enough time or effort was spent on the idea of development partnering with the Catholic Church property. Everybody went, I don't know why and when, for the three-story option, and no one really knew about the other side of 29. It's been a gradual revelation, but the idea that the town wants workforce housing and we want lower-cost housing, we have to invest in it. We have to drive the project.
Yeah, could you wrap up, Pam? You're, you're putting me on the spot here, the very first person that I asked to speak, and I asked to not monopolize everyone else's time, so please wrap up.
Okay, well, that we need to be investing in that for ourselves.
Thank you. Who's next? There's gotta be a next. Eric.
Eric Knight, 6638 Jefferson Street. So don't, don't count this, for the first three seconds, I want to compliment staff, so people can count it.
No, we're counting it.
It's my time.
We're counting it.
So I, I, what I wanted to say is, I, as the vice mayor says, I want to compliment staff and the consultants, because this has been a very long process, but I think it's been a very good process. No, no meeting or process is ever perfect, but I think this process was very inviting. I think it invited, there was more public involvement, honestly, in my experience for this general plan update than, than 25 years ago. So I think it was a very good, a very good process, and.
You're on the clock now.
And so now I'm on the clock. So I have two comments. I just, I just want to summarize and, in my letter, and it has to do with the commercial zoning and then agricultural, the agricultural lands within the town limits. So I apologize, and I don't mean, I heard with Sandra how she described my letter, but I feel like I mischaracterized what I told, what I wrote in this letter. And my main focus, one, on commercial zoning, is that I think it's a complete surprise to the community that development on the west side of 29 is in this plan. I don't believe in community meetings in the tag. It was barely briefly talked. I listened to your December 4 meeting. It wasn't discussed on council. I listened to the April 9 meeting for ZDRB. It wasn't discussed. But what we're talking about is creating commercial development on the west side of Highway 29. And I know the mayor mentioned at some point that the overpass may block that, but we're talking about buildings on the west side affecting, I think, the character, the community. And my only reference point, as I said in my letter, is the assisted living in front of Justin Sienna on, in Napa. And that development has a ditch, a train track easement, and Solano Avenue between itself and the project. And you're, we're talking about an opening for a developer to build right on 29 to narrow that landscaping. I don't think we know enough about the side area, the site plan. I think this is a perfect opportunity for a developer, basically, to come back to the town afterwards and do a general plan amendment. So what I was speaking to in the letter is, that portion of the development was never discussed. I don't think the community spoke to it at all, and it should be removed. I, I suggested it should be removed from this general plan update. And then in terms of the third, third stories, my only, in my letter, very quickly, as I said, that I thought at one point in the, in the language, it said allow third story, but deeper in the language in LU 2.5, it talked about it may be granted. And I think it would be much better to leave it in a form of a consistent language, where it'd say it may be granted than, than saying allowing in one spot and it may be granted in another, because it may be granted is a lot more, that will require, I think, a builder to really speak to our issues before the ZDRB or council would approve it. So, and I stated that in the letter. So the other issue was on agricultural, agriculture within the town limits of Yountville. And my main point I made in the letter is that I think that we have the best opportunity in a generation with the mayor and the town, and the town manager and this council and our state representatives to make positive, create positive opportunities for housing in our community. But we need to leave a future council flexibility on when they redo the next housing element. And, and as Sandra mentioned, there was this language in some places where it said preserve agricultural lands within the town, and then it's, but predominantly, what we spoke to at tag was, we, we thought the words retain agricultural lands was more appropriate. And it spoke to the greater understanding, I think, of our current general plan, that we're currently retaining it. But if something, if, if, if at some point, the Catholic Church property or the Veterans Home, we can't get housing opportunities there, and as the mayor's talked about in the past, that the state is hammering communities to meet housing obligations, that at some point, there may be some type of, we need to create some opportunity, we're maybe only on two or three acres, but flexibility. And so the language for agricultural use should say, I believe should say retain, and we shouldn't be using preserving, because I think it limits the future council. And that was my only thing. And the last thing, very briefly, was a description about the Pulissa property that talked about it being a transition parcel, and I'm, I'm, didn't get a chance to ever to ask Sandra, if that currently existed in the, in the housing element and wasn't added this time around, then it's something I missed, and I understand that it can't be removed. But overall, I just want to tell you, I think this has been a very good process. The only, last thing, again, I would say is, please don't be in a hurry tonight. I know this has been a long process. It's been a very, very good process. We'll let the community speak tonight. I'd hope that the sun report out what you've talked about, that the community listen to the meeting on, they're, on, at home if they need to, and then come back next meeting, so that there's a completion of this and people have an opportunity to hear what you say tonight and think about that and, and speak to it if they need to. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Knight. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Whitney Diver McAvoy with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. I also wanted to echo Eric's Knights' comments of thanks to staff and the consultants. As a member of the tag, this was a really enlightening process, and I enjoyed it immensely, and being a part of that group was really educational. I just, I wanted to make remark of hearing Eric's and Pam's comments, which are always very thoughtful. And I know Pam came to nearly every tag meeting and was actually very involved in that process, and gave a lot of really great feedback to this document before you tonight. That said, I do believe the community had a thoughtful and thorough discussion on the three stories. Sandra listed that countless times that we addressed it at the ZDRB and this body, as well as with the tag, and at the community workshops. I also believe the west side of Highway 29 was part of those discussions, also as Sandra noted when she was making her remarks. That said, the three-story height limit of 35 feet has been amended in the draft before you this evening, is not very tall. Also, as Sandra pointed out, really not fully accommodating three stories. So I think that it's important to keep in mind, when we're talking about the scale of these buildings, I would assume those that are on Solano right in front of Justin Sienna are higher than 35 feet. So I think it's important to keep in mind the feedback that we've gotten from our whole community and not just those that we're hearing tonight, many of which could probably not be here this evening when making our decisions. Additionally, I believe that this community has voiced its support for workforce housing by voting to support the 1% TOT increase on our hotels, and I believe all of our hotels were in support of that as well. And those dollars are earmarked, earmarked to go to workforce housing in our community. And I know that staff and the mayor and the Chamber of Women working diligently on solutions for workforce housing here in Yountville, and we want those dollars to stay here if they can. So thank you very much, and hopefully we will have a new general plan soon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Might be the last chance for two years of conversation. Okay. Any other, so I'll go ahead and, last chance before I close the public hearing. Any questions that we might want to ask staff in or consultants? Nope? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I warned you. No hands coming up now. Eric knows, Pam knows. They come here all the time. Additional discussion by council? Would anyone like to kick things off? I'll start gently with Sandra, the 35, as, as Whitney just mentioned, the 35, 35 feet at V Marketplace as a roof line to be measuring height, how does that compare to a standard three-foot-high structure? Like if somebody, a three-story structure, it just started from scratch?
It's lower, because you see at least 10-foot-tall interior plate height with one-to-two-foot floor and ceiling assembly between the floors. I think we're closer to about 40 feet, so it is significantly lower than a more traditional three-story building.
And that would be the maximum that we're talking about?
Yes.
35?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay. Yeah, Councilmember Durham?
Can we speak to the comments made about housing with the Catholic Church? It's my understanding that, thank you, it's, this is the first time tonight, it's my understanding that that's an ongoing process, even though it's not in the general plan.
Well, it, what I want to say is, it's currently zoned multifamily residential.
Correct.
So it could be developed, just like a lot of, we have vacant property, and they could be developed based on what their zoning is, based on when the property owner wants to do something with the property. So the town has had very preliminary conversations with the church to see how they might want to, and, and we're advancing that dialogue, but that dialogue is not moving at a rapid pace. But it is currently zoned, and so when you say it's not part of the general plan, it's not a change.
Correct.
Because I want to remind everybody that the existing zoning, except for those four change areas we're talking about, is staying in place in this document. So the multifamily residential component there will continue to be part of the town's general plan going forward.
One other question. I actually highlighted resident-serving in the general plan, and I don't know what page it was on. And I think I highlighted it for a different reason than Ms. Reeves brought up, but it is in the general plan. It's just not specifically within, we chose to say underrepresented, because even the Humboldt property owner came up to us during several presentations and questioned about putting a, some sort of food and beverage-type business in there. Does it need to be consistent, because the resident servings, I mean, resident serving is in the general plan?
We've tried to eliminate reference to resident-serving or visitor-serving, and instead identify the types of uses or categories that this, the town residents deem as desirable. So if you did find that location, we'd like to take a look at it and correct it. Otherwise, we're using the term residential-scaled commercial as it relates to a zoning district, and that zoning district has predetermined uses that are allowed and development standards that are required.
And then so by us saying, us, the general plan saying underrepresented, then we're leaving that up to the process to determine what that is at the time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I, I have a question before we get into further deliberation. In response to Mr. Knight's concern about why look at the Far West parcel that's adjacent to the train tracks, looking again at page 59, that has the change areas colorized, and that's part of the west side of Washington Street, I mean, we look at that because it's in the town limits, correct?
That is correct.
And we're not looking at it because of any particular project, just like we're not looking at individual projects anywhere else. We don't have applications for six residential parcels on North Washington either.
That is correct.
And so what, why wouldn't we look at that if it's a parcel that's undeveloped beyond a train depot as future development site? a train depot as future development site, just like we have looked at others? Again, doesn't mean it's going to change, but it's a part of the town limits. Again, I think it's similar maybe to the Catholic Church property has a zoning designation. The use is different than that and may never change from that. But I'm assuming that's the rationale for, and then not having a fifth change area, which is specifically the parcel that's on the other side of the rest of West Washington?
Yes, that is generally the thought process we went through.
Okay. Counselor Durham?
Sorry.
I saw you lean forward.
Thank you, thank you. To further that, and I'm sorry, I've read a lot the last couple of days, so I might be a little confused. Did we not say that the three-story bonus would be non-hotel, non-food related?
Right, it has to be one of those items that it's affordable housing, underrepresented retail, or office or service uses that we don't otherwise see in town.
So...
And the idea is providing a benefit to residents.
So ultimately, and stop me at any point, they could not build a three-story hotel, but they could build a three-story property that included a residential element to it?
They could build a three-story hotel potentially as long as it includes a component that meets that, that satisfies the incentive for that third story because it's giving something more than a hotel.
Very good. Thank you.
Something more than a hotel, would be.
Does that also mean today they could build a two-story hotel?
Yes.
As permitted, as zoned right now?
Yes.
Okay.
It is interesting to note that on the east side of the highway, it's zoned primary commercial, but on the west side, it's zoned public facilities. But private development upon approval of a use permit by the council is allowed in private facilities. Uses at, the golf carts are an example, the balloon launches are another example on that public facilities designation.
They can also build two-story or three-story retail, and then if they go to, they want a third story, that's when the public benefit triggers as a requirement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So picking up where Councilmember Durham left off, if today, one of our property owners in the change area on Washington said, "I have sufficient FAR without a bonus. I want to build a three-story hotel," they could not do that, correct?
Right.
And if this general plan, as it is written, goes into effect, can they build a three-story hotel if they do not need the FAR bonus?
They can build a three-story hotel because the three-story is the bonus with those uses that are identified.
So the general plan, as we conceive it and are discussing it, is there is no three-story without a community benefit?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
If I could add on, the same condition would be true there, they could build anything two stories?
Yes.
Within that zone? Okay.
So now I finally found my site to the FAR things I was discussing. It's LU 7.5 and 7.5A. And it reads, "Provide a floor-area ratio bonus for certain uses that increase diversity and offer benefit to residents." So let's say we adopt that as written, does that mean that anyone who had any of those uses, no matter how insignificant a portion of their property, would be eligible for the FAR bonus?
No, it would have to meet the intent of these provisions, which we will further flesh out as part of the zoning ordinance and design ordinance update, where we put firmer boundaries on that. So we know that there is this desire to move forward with a potential third story provided these beneficial uses are provided. We'll explore that in greater detail.
And I think it's really important to understand, oh, it's really important to understand that the council is going to make the determination that the project provides community benefit. Without that determination, they are not eligible for the opportunity to go to three stories. I just want to make that, you know, really, really clear. This is not three stories by right. It's three stories only if the council determines that what they're offering and what they're providing makes community benefit. So this council and a future council is going to have, you know, and we're going to work on the policy statements, but just like, you know, this community, we use the conditional use permit process. I want to really stress everything. It's going to be case by case, and in order for them to go down that road, the first thing is the council has to say, "Okay, there appears to be community benefit. We accept that."
Okay. So then following on LU 7.5A, it says amend the design standards ordinance to allow an FAR bonus for retail and service uses on the west side, this boundary, that boundary. So that as written, without any changes to our ordinances, our existing ordinances, would anything that is built over there would then have to, I'm getting to, I have concerns about the three stories. I'm getting to how, as I think Sandra, you put it really well, the narrative is supposed to frame our boundaries, but sometimes in my mind at least, the narrative doesn't get carried to the policies, and typically I think people are going to look at the policies. So that's why I'm asking these questions. It's, that's sort of my concern about that. And then on the language, as Councilmember Durham discussed, there's a, there are a number of ways we seem to be saying the same thing in here. My favorite one that I saw and that I would like to focus us on is businesses and services that serve residents' everyday needs. I think that certainly goes to what we call local serving, local-oriented. So to me, there is some value inconsistency in the language. Another kind of technical question, table LU 2 talks about maximum densities and intensities, and I think wisely says they are not guaranteed. These are an upper limit and they are not guaranteed. But then LU 1.1B says, "Allow development at any density or intensity within the range." So again, I just want to make sure that all of our language matches. That's, that's where I'm going with most of the things that I have on my list tonight. I do have a question on Vista, since that has come up now. What difference, if any, would it make if the two stories were limited to interior units only? Because that is what we started out talking about. Would that make a difference to the Hopper Creek or the Washington Park people we've heard from?
Well, if we did that, there wouldn't be the two-story abutting the Washington Park neighborhood. It's separated by the outer ring to the inner ring. It would still capture quite a few of the buildings that are east of Hopper Creek condos.
But that inner circle would be several hundred feet at a minimum from...
Approximately 565.
Approximately. So 565 feet away?
A lot.
From the first unit that would potentially have a second story?
Correct.
In that inner circle?
But right now, the plan as it's before us is subject to owners' desires and HOA. Any Vista unit could have a second story?
Yes. So the iterations of this policy as it went before the TAG, the different boards and commissions in the council, was that we had, it started out as allowing only the interior ring, but discussion was that we shouldn't limit it at this point to leave the opportunity open, that we didn't even know how the homeowners association wanted to approach it, whether individual property owners were interested, and this created more of an opportunity.
And then on the LU 6.2A, which is North Washington, we mention new mixes may be allowed within the existing structures and in redeveloped buildings. What do we mean by redeveloped buildings?
Raising the existing structures and starting fresh.
So new construction?
New construction.
Okay. And then this goes to the Humboldt, possible rezoning. One is, could we do an overlay on Humboldt like we're contemplating on Washington so that it could be residential or residential-scale commercial at the owner's option? Okay. And then there's, in the housing element, which I know is not really before us, but there's HO 5.3A, which talks about affordable housing requirements. And it says, "Where conversion of residentially-zoned land to commercial uses is permitted, the town will work with the property owner to require an affordable housing component that attempts to achieve the goal of providing affordable housing units equivalent to, one, the minimum, the minimum affordable units that would have been required of residential development on the site, plus housing units for one-half of the number of expected full-time equivalent jobs generated by the commercial use." So would this apply to Humboldt?
It would, but the first prong of that test that you're providing wouldn't apply because they are not required to provide any affordable housing on site, since they can be developed as single-family residential. And getting our sort of arms around that second prong, where it's one-half of the full-time employees, has proved challenging in the past. I would say most recently, we applied it to Heston, and even though they had, it was a rezone from residential to commercial, and they had about five below-market-rate units on the property, even though they weren't affordable housing designated, they were held to one replacement. So it's a difficult standard to apply if we actually want to develop as commercial, retain some level of housing. How much is that really? How much can a site accommodate? So there's been flexibility in the application of that housing element program, rightfully so, because of the constraints.
So if we, when we get to the language, if we said something like, "require at least two second-story housing units," that would leave us flexibility to perhaps come back to this...
Oh, at least two? Yes.
But we could then require more if we decided to apply this?
Yes.
Okay. I think, oh, and I think I got myself sidetracked about the densities. It says they're an upper limit, not guaranteed, but then it says we will allow development at any density or intensity within the range. So does, I just, oh, I didn't sidetrack myself. We don't, I don't want those to fight with each other. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Durham Becker?
Yes, but the Humboldt properties are already required to have housing as part of the development. Isn't that true?
Two, the question is, could we require more? And that's possible.
I see.
We could say.
But they're not required to have affordable housing, just housing.
That's right.
I see. And, no, I've lost my place. So the intent of beneficial uses, if the council does not determine, or could the council actually determine and say affordable housing as a policy there? I mean, could we write that into the intent of beneficial uses?
What page you on? I need to refer to it specifically.
Well, I don't know. It's a note I made on the side because...
Marita, in that area, the, the, the concept was that there could be a number of things, affordable housing being one, more commercial office space so that hairdressers, dentists, doctors have locations. It wasn't meant to only be one thing, or it could be the underrepresented retail. So the intent was to try to allow the developer to come up with the best mixed-use development, if you will, that would allow them to obtain the potential for a third story. And that's why, I mean, as, you know, we'll have the opportunity for you to help pre, you know, revise, you know, not revise, but enhance and develop the policy, but really there isn't a cookie cutter one. This is not an automatic. It has to come up with something, and it's, those examples, I think, are meant to be illusory of what could be done, but not, you know, it's not only, because if you put only affordable housing, then it's only affordable housing if that's the way you go. And I think the community conversation showed that, you know, there was an interest in more retail. We have heard the conversation, local serving in different ways. And again, it comes down to whether you use that business or not. The comment made about Tiffany's could be argued, "We don't have a jewelry store." But then the question would be, "Is that a jewelry store I would go to?" Two different conversations. But from a retail standpoint, we don't have a jewelry store. So again, this is where part of the idea of how do we, how do we influence the developer to give us some of those things that the community has said they would like more of? And that's the best way I could say. It needs to be, you know, arranged there because we don't have, there isn't a one-size-fits-all or a one thing only.
Well, in that vein, I wanted to say that I do understand that, and the two residents who spoke, I think it was Ms. Reeves who said that rather than to say that the three stories would be allowed, that they may be granted is a good idea because it, you know, makes it less, it makes it clearer that we expect them to live up to the intent of why they're allowed to have three stories. And I also liked what Eric said about changing it from preserve ag land to retain ag land because that exists. And it's, you know, the ag preserve is different than the agricultural land inside the town. Those are comments from, I've got so many, I can't even keep track.
I think Eric gets both attributions, by the way. I had him in my notes about the granted, maybe granted versus allowed. I think that was Eric, not Pam. Don't want to cheat him on the footnote.
Sorry.
I guess we're still asking questions of staff to get clarity. This is what happens when you have two years and 200-plus pages and a document that's supposed to live for two decades. So it's, it's not simple even at the very end, potentially. Other questions or clarity needed on certain elements? We've had a few proposed changes that might be substantive enough to impact our abilities tonight. We also have the fact that we're talking about the EIR as a separate potential action, just so we don't forget that. I'm sure Gary won't let us. Are there any other comments from anyone in particular? We still asking questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we've sort of, I think, morphed into discussion, I had some language, because the three story is of particular importance, I think, when I hear out in the neighborhood, and I think it has the potential to make the most dramatic impact on our everyday lives. And I'm, I'm going to read this, not for y'all to exactly take in and vote on, but just to give an idea of a different approach. For LU 2.5, which now I think reads maximum building height, to change it to say consideration of limited three-story building elements. The town is open to consideration of limited three-story building elements on the west side of Washington Street between Mulberry and Humboldt, and on the west side of Highway 29 between California and Humboldt, as shown in figure LU 1. Three-story buildings will be considered only if a significant portion of the project and its uses provide a community benefit such as affordable housing and/or businesses and services that serve residents' everyday needs. Such buildings shall not exceed 35 feet at their highest point, shall adhere to the requirements for massing in policy LU 2.4, and as noted above, shall be stepped back and located near the center of the development to avoid flat vertical planes and three-story development fronting Washington or other streets or highways, and shall address parking requirements and placement. Three-story elements are discretionary and not a matter of right. And the reason I took the time to write that is because I thought the narrative was really, really good about that, and it's kind of what I wanted, I sort of think I hear people saying. So it's, it's really not something so new as it is moving it from the narrative to a policy. And as the town manager said, just putting it right out there. This is a matter of discretion, not of right. It's not going to be right up on Washington Street. I know we all struggle with this, so I just throw that out as a possible revision to look at.
Thank you. I think that was a great summary. I think that was a great summary. And I would support that as one of the elements we're discussing, except for, I have to throw in except for, I'm, I'm not a fan of, of the residents' everyday needs. I'm not a fan of resident-serving business. Name one. Name one that only has residents that, that pay and make that business successful. You can't, cannot do it. And I think underrepresented retail is exactly what we've been talking about, is diversity. We used to have too many antique stores, as was mentioned in the staff report, and now we have one at Hill Family. And today, we have over a dozen places where you can taste wine. In 10 years, 15 years, we may be somewhere completely different. Might have nothing but technology here in Yountville. So it's very difficult for us to accept this document. It's not for us. It's for, you know, the younger generation of Yountville residents and business owners, and those that are willing to come here with their money and invest in Yountville. It's not just about those of us that have lived here for 20 or more years and like it the way it was 20 years ago. So, underrepresented retail, I get it. I just think we need to recognize, we are a destination, and we are a global destination. I'm very proud of that fact. We have people sitting in this room that benefit because of that and could not live in Yountville were it not for that. We can do both. We can serve our local residents and serve an international traveler, and it's not mutually, mutually exclusive. But I dare ask people that say they want resident-owned, you know, local-serving resident businesses to go and ask the business owners, "How's that working out?" When, as soon as something's cheaper online, you buy it online. As soon as you don't want to go pay for fuel at Kelly's, and you go down to Salvador because it's cheaper, you're not supporting local business, are you? So, you almost had me 100%? Just that one phrase. You know, I think we have to be realistic about the 30-foot, 35-foot height limit. I think it's less than three stories, frankly. And we need to recognize that we need to give a little bit in some areas. All we're doing is asking to give a little bit in our very small commercial footprint. And I think that's the least impactful area. We get to protect all of our residential neighborhoods as most as we can. We give some folks that want to have home businesses a little bit more opportunity to do that. We've talked about wanting to support our local residents and, and being in business. We have local home occupancy business owners in the audience today, and we want to continue to support that, because it's all about small business. It's not just local-serving business. You look at cities that don't have the luxuries that we have and the services we're able to provide, because we have businesses that attract people from outside our one-and-a-half-square And I, I support, the plan is presented with, I think, the language adjustment, I'll call it. I wouldn't even call it a change. Gary might disagree with me on that, that the Vice Mayor just proposed for that one area, the, the west of Washington Street area. Again, it's, it's very hard to leave this vague. It's against my nature, it's against some of our natures, to leave this vague to allow other councils in the next 20 years to do their jobs like we're trying to do our jobs now. And, but I do think we owe it to leave some flexibility in here, to let other people have a say. You know, we talk about wanting to attract young families and young business, but then we try to tell them they have to do it the way we've liked it in the past. I don't think that's fair or appropriate. So I think we can do both. Further comments from the council?
I have some comments.
Councilmember Moller?
I just wanted to make a, a very general statement. Some has already been said before, that we have been working for two years on this. There's been a lot of input from a lot of different people, and this is a plan. And I agree with the mayor that we, we really need to retain that, the flexibility in here, because we don't know how long this is going to take. It's the last one took us much, much longer than it probably should have. And I, I, I think that flexibility is going to be important. I think we're going to see a lot of changes in the next 20 years in this living document. We certainly made a lot of changes in our last general plan that we started in 1992. We were allowed by state law to make four changes a year in our general plan, correct? So we, we have an opportunity, when things come up and change again, to make those changes. We'll do them very judiciously, because you only have four times in a year to make a change, so you always like to keep some in, in reserve. So I, I think with that, that I think it is time to, we're going to have our final discussions to try to approve this tonight. I, I don't really think that we're going to make anything very substantial tonight. I do think we're going to be seeing things. I, I can't tell you how long in the future, six months, two years, that may be very substantial. So I think it's time to, to do that. I just also wanted to make a comment, why I had made some suggestions about agricultural lands. We had farmland in there in places. I don't, I agree that farmland belonged in the sections where it was related to the Department of Conservation, because that's their language. Even though they're not consistent, they talk about farmland, and they jump into prime ag land. But to me, it was not really about just making it concise, but these are important definitions. There's going to be a lot of pressure on growth due to our ag preserve in the future. We're going to get a lot of pressure to put more into Yountville. And sometimes, if you don't have these very specific designations that are related to zoning, like agricultural land, people tend to see, "Oh, that's infill. Oh, that's vacant." So I think it was very important that we put a very specific intent, that we wanted at this time in this plan, agricultural land. And so that is part of the, the community has spoken, and is part of our character and our goals of our town. We don't really know what's going to happen in the future, but I think that was an important designation, that we used that term. So overall, I, I think that a lot of work has gone into this. It's a really great document, a long time coming. There's some new elements I personally like about the historical character of our town. I'm glad we got that in there, because that's what this is all about, history. So I, I think this really sums up in a very nice way our community values and our goals, as we've come together to, as a community, to put it together. And I think it shows to me that Yountville is a place for, for everyone to live. And this document is, encompasses a lot of aspects that will make it home for many of us in the future years. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Looking to this side of the desk, who first?
I'll go first.
Councilmember Dornbecker, please.
So I always believe in dealing with reality, and the reality is, excuse me, the reality is, I'm going to choke. Reality is that the pressure for housing in this state is very, it's really bearing down on us, and will continue to. Thank you, Mayor. I, I really applaud the effort and time that has gone into this, and, and I'd say 98% of this I can, you know, without question, support. My only, and I can support in, in terms of, because the, the pressure for housing is going to, to drive us to make some of the kinds of changes that we don't want to make. I think that three stories, depending on the design and the, and the, how it's set back and the different designs that will come forward as we look further into it, if it provides affordable housing, and also other retail elements for this town. Because the one thing I've always felt about our downtown is that it was disjointed, and there wasn't enough, you know, variety of products for people to buy. And if, you know, if, heaven forbid, something should happen to the vineyards and tourism falls off, and, you know, we need retail diversity. So it's not an easy call, but I, and I would like to see some of the language that the Vice Mayor has put forward, you know, written out and brought to us, so that I could really, you know, really understand it. I've read so much over and over, but I would like to see one more pass at it, and, and I would be able to make my decision. If we did, you know, take a break and come back at the next council meeting, I would be, I'd be prepared to pass it with, if I could read, actually, some of the comments and things that have been made tonight, and some of the suggestions. So that's my take on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
I want to thank you for making the comment that the young people of Yountville will benefit from this, because as the youngest one on the council, I intend to fully benefit from this plan 20 years from now, when I'm still living in Yountville. So thank you for that. I, I respect Chair Knight's comments about letting everybody watch this and see it and let it flesh out again. And with that, I, I would like to state that we, there's no, there's really, to me, there's no substantive changes. The only change would be the further clarification of the third floors, which, which we've been discussing the most, which we put out there, which would change it. I, you know, this, I, I have to draw an analogy to the same thing with the water discussion that we had. Everybody showed up for the water discussion, and we discussed it for quite some time. Not two years, but we discussed it for quite some time. The decision was made by the council, but also at that time, a lot of discussion was had, that the real discussions could be had at the budget meetings, to really dive into the details on the water rates. Nobody showed up to the water rate, the budget meetings. Excuse me, one person did. And we didn't talk about water. I, I'm making the analogy that the same thing's going to happen with all the discussion with the zoning design and review board, and all the changes to the municipal code that we'll need to make as a result of this. I think those are the important times to show up, when we flesh all of this out, when we really discuss what underrepresented, underrepresented means, what the, what the parameters are for allowing that FAR third, third-floor bonus. So with that being said, we, everything that we have discussed here has been discussed many times before. We haven't brought up anything new, and if anything, we've just further explained where we stand, as well as where the town stands. So with that being said, I'm willing to move forward with this this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think the thing that we, when we talk about substantive versus non-substantive changes, my reading of all the surveys, and the click polls and the online surveys, is there are some changes we have made from what a goodly portion, and sometimes a majority of our residents said. For example, the Humboldt question talked about it would be a non-alcohol, non-wine use. We talked about that when this came before us in December, and we had reasons, and still have reasons, that maybe that won't work. And I thought it was really valuable that Director Liston said tonight, "There's not going to be a wine bar there. There's not going to be a full-service restaurant there, because it's already zoned that way." So maybe that becomes less important. Same thing with the three stories. There was discussion and polling about whether or not there could be alcohol or restaurant use. And my sense of the sentiment was, it, people typically thought, "No, I, that's not what we want more of." Hence, the underrepresented retail was born, because there may come a time when tasting rooms have left our town, and, you know, we are desperate for a two-ounce pour. So, I, I mean, I'm trying to look into the future to see, and that's what I'm trying to do by the changes I'm making, is give deference and honor to what our residents think, and I think the mayor made a really good point. It's really hard for me to say, "This isn't really," it is for us, but it's for way beyond us, and we don't know what's going to happen. So the changes that I'm about to suggest, I'm, I'm trying to thread that needle. And so in addition to the three-story, the other changes that I personally would like to see, LU 2.2, variety of building heights and sizes. It says encourage a variety of building heights and sizes in new development. I would like to see that say, "require," because again, we don't want a bunch of boxes here in Yountville. Setbacks, says provide building setbacks. I would like to put a word like generous in, because again, we don't want things right up on the street. Building massing, I would like to add something that says, "Massing should mitigate obstruction of existing views and vistas, even though they're not identified as a view corridor." Because that was a misunderstanding among many of us of what's a view versus what's a view corridor. And again, as the town manager said, these would all then be fleshed out by our zoning board and by whoever is on the council then. So I would like to see those as far as some of our land use items. On the Humboldt property, because we are converting residential to commercial, rather than rezone it, I would like to make it an overlay district, because I think that does give flexibility. If someone wants to keep it as a resident, great. If someone wants to have it residential-scale commercial, great. I thought about adding food and wine use incidental to a related retail use, such as a pharmacy soda fountain, may be acceptable as determined by the town council. Because I think that was, that was something we talked about up here. But full-service restaurants, cannabis businesses, tasting rooms, wine bars, similar uses are not permitted. And then I would like to, because of our affordable housing issues, and because we already have something on the books that says we can look for additional affordable housing when redevelopment occurs, I would like to, rather than sticking it to second-story units, I'd like to say, "require at least two second-story housing units." One of the units may be used as a primary dwelling unit for the owner or the owner's immediate family, subject to a use permit. So with those kinds of changes, I think, you know, it's not perfect. We don't know what's going to happen. And if I were sitting down, and heaven forbid, trying to write this whole document, it would be different. But I think it does justice to us as to what we're looking for, to maintain the character of our town while still giving us a way forward.
Could I ask you to repeat the recommendation you made about secondary use in the soda fountain?
Yes. It, "Food and wine use incidental to a related retail use, such as a pharmacy soda fountain, may be acceptable as determined by the town council." So that would give the option for some sort of, quote, "non," it wouldn't be a full-service restaurant, but it would make that clear.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can just add one comment on the general overview of the general plan and how this works in the zoning code. One of the reasons why it just says, "Provide a setback," I don't want to put words in the consultant's mouth, but one of the benefits to that, the zoning code must be consistent with the general plan. Can't contradict it. And so by saying just "a setback," any setback that this council chooses to put in the zoning code will be consistent with the general plan. If words are inserted, such as generous, it can potentially open it up to an argument about what is a generous setback, and potentially a challenge against your future zoning code. And so by leaving it out, you have discretion later through the zoning code to specify what is an appropriate setback, what is an underrepresented retail, and things of that nature. So there's a benefit there, and just wanted to add that comment.
Do you feel the same way about the requirement for a diversity in design of three-story?
What was the specific language that's being changed?
It says, "Variety of building heights and sizes." It says variety of building heights and sizes and it currently reads encourage a variety of building heights and sizes in new development. And I was wanting to change it to require a variety of heights and sizes.
So I would, I would provide the same comment there only because it, whatever zoning ordinance you implement, that furthers that goal will encourage it. Requiring it is placing more restrictions on the front end, which limits your ability later on. It's much easier to change a zoning code. It's much easier to put a condition in a use permit. Going back through this process potentially requires an EIR amendment and a general plan amendment and a whole process. And so there is a benefit to keeping it general.
So then the same question I think would be where I would like to add, require massing and require building placement that does not obstruct view corridors and that mitigates obstruction of existing views and vistas not identified as a view corridor. Is that the same issue?
I would think so.
See, I should learn to send this to you before the meeting.
A lawyer not being able to be vague, I think that's pretty understandable. I get it. Councilor Dornbecker?
Yes, and I wanted to ask that same sort of question about requiring that second story's only beyond the inner circle of vista condominiums.
And what is the current language and what's it being changed to?
Maybe Sandra can help you with the specific language on that.
The Vista Condominiums program states, consider amending the Vista Condominiums master plan to allow existing housing units to add a second story provided buildings conform to policy LU 5.1.
And so by leaving it open to consider, that's something in the zoning code that gives you the option to do it or not. If you lock it in now in the general plan to say require this, your zoning code must do so.
But what that, what this is saying is that the outer ring would not be allowed to have second stories. That's why I'm asking.
And that is something that could be in the general plan. It's also something that you could do in the zoning code. And you could specifically say, when the zoning code amendment comes up, because the next process here, state law says town has a reasonable amount of time to amend the zoning code to comply. The general principles, the zoning code must be consistent with those. When that zoning code amendment becomes for the council, you can specifically say, here's what we're going to do in this area, here's what, and that could speak directly to what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
I think you brought up a very good point earlier about, and it's been discussed multiple times, about the state pressure on housing.
Absolutely.
And anything that's going to limit the flexibility we have, again, not saying that we're going to do it and not saying that the Vista condos are going to all become two-story condominiums. But if we say absolutely not, then we're going through a general plan amendment, potentially an EIR review. If at some point we think that is the least impactful opportunity to provide new housing units, then our hands are already tied. So again, it's, it's difficult to not want every detail nailed down, but we almost, we have to kind of resist that, I think.
But every detail can be nailed down in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
That's going to come back.
And it has just as much weight. Other comments? Yes, Councilor Durham?
I have a question on the overlay for Humboldt. I'm just, I was just trying to understand why do an overlay, why do, why do an overlay for the single property with the owner who's already planned on this? I mean, is the intent just if he were to go away that it would be another option? Okay, very good.
Sandra, what's your thought on the overlay at Humboldt versus the proposed zoning change?
Well, I think Member Durham has a good point. We have an interested property owner that wants to move forward with the development. If it was more speculation that they wanted to move forward, maybe the overlay would make sense. So I'm not sure.
But the overlay doesn't prohibit the current owner to do exactly what
Right.
he is proposing to do.
Although it's a little more unusual because it's an overlay for two different zoning districts depending on which is preferred rather than committing to a direction that the council and the community have supported.
And we have made straight changes to the areas you described. I think the gates, the recently built
Yes.
commercial space and the Heston parcel, those were straight zoning changes to accommodate
That is correct.
the use change.
And I think also when we look at the community feedback on the four change areas, there was more support for the rezoning of Humboldt than any of the others.
Can I?
Councilor Mueller?
Way in on Humboldt. I think this is exactly something that I think, you know, it, it could change. We don't know in the future. But this, that would be a perfect example of doing a general plan amendment, which we can have up to for, in a year. So I kind of think it's very broad and flexible now. And instead of rehashing what the, the public wants and what, you know, might make sense if somebody sells a property, wouldn't it be, I would think that we would deal with something like that in the future, especially going to the point that we do have an interested property owner right now. And we still have to do our zoning ordinances for that new change there. So I think it can be handled again, kind of in the future. I think it's broad enough now that I could certainly live with it as it stands, not to say that we might put extra restrictions on it when we do get to the next step, which is changing all of our zoning codes because there's a lot of work to be, to be done there. So, so I like that flexibility now.
As it's currently presented.
As it's currently presented. Not to say that it might not be one of the very first things that we might have a general plan amendment for because we've got a property owner who says they want to move forward. But we have that flexibility too. And we haven't written the zoning code, correct?
Right. I'm not sure exactly what you're saying, but I don't think we want to kick this one down the road because we've had such community feedback on it and
Oh yeah, no, I don't want to kick it down the road. I want to, I'm, I'm ready to, as it's written right now, I think it allows us the flexibility once we
Yes.
if we do really get an application that might, this might be the first thing we see, maybe, who knows. It gives us that opportunity to
Yes, I agree with that, yes.
deal with it at that time, so.
Well, I think we, we should also recognize we have a local property owner who has expressed a general concept of what he wants to do with that property that respects not only the immediate street, but the neighborhood and the general characteristics of the community. And that's what we should focus on. And I think we can get there with the zoning changes as, has been discussed significantly going forward. So, Councilor Dornbecker?
Which includes housing as part of that development.
Two required housing units, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
At least.
Soda fountain is an underrepresented retail use. That is true.
I know.
Further discussion or is there action to be presented? I was thinking about trying to go through each change area and decided I don't want to do that because each one relates to the other, it seems like. So since I believe the vice mayor has some language that she's going to propose, I'm going to start with you. If you want to make a motion and present your proposed modifications. And Gary and Sandra are ready to try to document said changes.
Okay. I am not ready. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 19-3551, certifying the final environmental impact report for the envisioned Yountville general plan, including adoption of the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, and adopt resolution number 19-3552, approving the envisioned Yountville general plan with the following
Sorry, I think, Gary, we need two votes.
Oh, do we need two separate motions?
General plan separate?
Yes, please.
Okay. Then back up to after overriding considerations. That's the first motion. The EIR, including adoption of the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. That's the first motion.
Does that work?
Yes.
You got it?
Got it.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion on that?
I did, yes, thank you.
Okay. Please vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. And please continue.
Okay. And then I would also like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 19-3552, approving the envisioned Yountville general plan with the following changes.
And please go slow.
Well, I, I can read them and then just send them to you. Is that all right, town attorney?
No, we're, we're, let's, let's try to get them documented right now
Or you want to write them down as we go?
because we may be able to act on them immediately.
All right. Consideration of LU 2.5 is amended to read, consideration of limited three-story building elements, period. The town is open to consideration of limited three-story building elements on the west side of Washington Street between Mulberry and Humboldt and on the west side of Highway 29 between California and Humboldt as shown in figure LU-1, period. Three-story buildings will be considered only if a significant portion of the project and its uses provide a community benefit such as affordable housing and/or underrepresented businesses and services that provide an opportunity for resident use. Such buildings shall not exceed 35 feet at their highest point, shall adhere to the requirements for massing in policy LU-2.4, and as noted above, shall be stepped back and located near the center of the development to avoid flat vertical planes and three-story development fronting Washington or other streets or highways, and shall address parking requirements and placement. Three-story elements are discretionary and not a matter of right.
Got it.
Okay. And then the second change is LU 6.2B as in Boyd, Humboldt rezoning, amended to read, rezone two vacant residential parcels at the northeast intersection of Humboldt Street and Jefferson Street from old town historic to residential scale commercial with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, period. Food and wine use incidental to related retail use such as a soda, such as a pharmacy soda fountain may be acceptable as determined by the town council. However, full-service restaurants, cannabis businesses, tasting rooms, wine bars, and similar uses are not permitted. Require at least two second-story at least two second-story housing units, rental housing units in any development proposal. One of the units, however, may be used as a primary dwelling unit of either owner or owner's immediate family subject to a use permit.
Okay.
And that's my motion. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Is there total clarity?
Um.
No, there isn't total clarity?
There is on those two changes. How about any of the revisions that were in the documents supported by staff that came after the publication of the staff report? Eric Norrie, Margie Mueller and yourself, Vice Mayor.
The Matrix.
Yeah.
I think all of the responses that you gave as a staff response, Sandra, were appropriate. And I would, I would support them as you presented them.
Okay.
And I would add that to my motion. And as far as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission and the Yountville Arts Commission, to name the current members because they are the ones who reviewed and approved the plan we're adopting.
Okay, thank you.
So
Sandra.
The second, so the motioner agreed to that addition, the seconder?
I agree.
Okay.
I second.
So we did
This is certifying the impact.
So we're still doing the EIR. Is that what you're saying?
No, that was approved.
No, that's what I thought. So we're only doing one.
Yeah, but it's all part of
Oh, it's the same. Got it. So we're going to try to vote on this now. Please vote.
Oh, I missed one. Mine just disappeared.
All of us are supposed to vote.
I know, it just, it was there and I
So are you, please, audibly?
I agree.
All right, so that passes unanimously. So two years and 200 and X pages later.
Done.
And a huge thank you to everybody that participated. For those of you smart enough to come into the room, we're going to take a seven-minute cupcake break because that's how we celebrate. But we also want to recognize there are some folks in the audience that have been, that have given many, many hours of their personal time and volunteered through the various committees and workshops. We want to recognize them as well as commission members that have also participated in this process. As soon as I find my list of names, what we'd like to do is for those members here, I'm going to read off some people that don't get wine because you've already been given wine for another reason. And those that haven't, we're going to give you some wine and then we'll all enjoy some sugar. But just to recognize by name our tag members that spent, I don't know, Eric, how many, don't tell me how many meetings, we don't know, but many, many hours and helped us get to where we are today. Eric Knight, Boyd Dennington, Joel Brightigam, Verlin Chalmers, Whitney Diver McAvoy, Liz Howard, Carl Johnson, Davio Santos, Susan Wickers, PJ Hudson, and Lynn Pena. So thanks to all of them and their role. But no wine for you. No wine for them. ZDRB members get wine because they spend even more hours on this. But is Kim here? Yeah, she's here. You don't get two bottles just because you're on two commissions, sorry. But our ZDR, ZDRB members want to recognize Kimberly Cook, Barbara Allen, Jared Denton, Karen Lazz, Stephen Miller, Lynn Pena, Mikel Tigret and Michael Zagorsk, Zagorsik. You do get wine. Those of you who are here, please come up and take it off our hands. I think our council members are going to go to our, our supply here and, and offer them up to you. So come on, yeah, come on up now. Now's good. Stephen, aren't you getting up here?
Yes, I'm
All right. There you go. Good man.
I'm just having a dope boy.
I also want to recognize our Park and Rec Committee members. If they are here, they get wine. If they're not, they still get wine. Sandy Fagan, Verlin Chalmers, Paul Merciniak, Kara Scoggins, Carol Schreemang, and Richard Carvalho, still not 21, doesn't get wine. And no, Jennifer does not get to take it on his behalf. And then our Arts Commission members, the aforementioned Kimberly Cook, not, no two bottles. But everyone else on this list will receive wine and appreciation. Jim McDonald, Amy, Kevin Etia, Jake Costa, Noel Resnick, Rhonda Scherer, and Marty Wordsworth. So those are the folks that they joined many other people that helped us get here, all the public comment. I want to express our, the council's sincere appreciation for our professionals that go through this somehow on a regular basis with many, many clients. How you do it, I do not know. But thank you all very much and Sandra for helping be the, you know, the, the lead, you know, the, the tip of this whole effort for all of us along with Nathan. Thank you. I hope you don't do one of these in your career again, huh? So we do want to just take a break, let people kind of soak in the effort that's been put in, soak in some sugar. But I do ask if we could all get back because we do have some serious business still to attend to. By no later than nine o'clock, even a little earlier than that would be appreciated. So Everybody for indulging us on that brief break. We are going to proceed with our second public hearing tonight, item 9B, which is a reconsideration request by Maison Rie regarding fireplace. So let's see, are we getting this?
Good evening. Look at it from me. And what I thought I would do is, since you know about the fireplace, is describe more of the history that we've gone through with this applicant.
Sorry, I want to formally open the public hearing now.
Okay.
Tell us about it.
So it was in early September of last year So it was in early September of last year that staff first noticed that they were constructing a fireplace within the side setback that exceeded the ten-foot limit. And when they were going through the entitlement phase for design review, they had showed a fire pit. The fire pit was approved. Somewhere along the way, the fireplace pit was replaced with a fireplace on the drawings. We had something like twenty-four revisions to the building permit set. Those were about a hundred pages long, and staff missed it. So we will accept our fault there. But when we noticed that the fireplace was under construction, we put a stop work order on it, the building inspector did. And we discussed the applicant's concerns with them. They were planning to open later that month in September, and they asked if they could please complete it because they could not cut down the steel structure. They couldn't order a lower structure in time for the grand opening. And we let them know that they could complete the fireplace at their risk, that it would need to go before the town council on an application for exception and design review, and they indicated that they would do that. We received an application that came before the ZDRB with a recommendation to approve the exception findings for the fireplace to allow it to be eighteen feet in height. But when it came before the council, the council approved a resolution directing them to reduce it to ten feet in height, consistent with the municipal code. Another element that they were directed to correct was to bring the height of the knee walls in the front setback down to three feet. And they were given ninety days to do so. As we approached the end of February, they were only just completing the knee walls, and they indicated that they didn't have time to address the fireplace in terms of prioritization. So before the ninety days had expired, that deadline that was in the town council resolution, we issued a notice of violation indicating that they had thirty days to remedy the problem, and we reserved our right to impose fines and penalties should they not follow through. The day before the expiration of that thirty-day period, they submitted this application, and they are asking the council to reconsider the denial for the eighteen-foot-tall fireplace based on the fact that an exception could be granted under, for master development projects such as this, if the findings can be made. Those findings are pretty difficult. They're very similar to Varian's findings, but there is an option. And they are here tonight to hopefully change your mind. We are seeking direction from the council before presenting you with a resolution because we don't find that any of the facts that they have presented to justify the application really sway us that the decision should be made. But if you would like to get additional information, have any of the assertions that they have made peer-reviewed or tested, we can do that. And we can come back in the future with a resolution. So I'll turn it over to the applicant, really, to make the presentation for their case.
Okay, so.
Unless you have questions.
Yeah, questions of the staff report? Hold on just a second.
Thank you. Do you, do we know who planted the olive trees and when they were planted?
Those trees were all planted by the applicant during this renovation process. Existing olive trees were removed, and a whole slew of them were brought, new ones were brought in.
Yes, Councilor O'Durham?
I wanted to qualify. This is not, this is a design review application. It's not an appeal.
That's right.
And even though we made the decision in November, they had a chance to appeal, correct?
Yes.
And then, when they were supposed to, had a deadline for compliance in February, and then March, they had an opportunity to appeal?
They could appeal the notice of violation, but it wouldn't have affected the town council decision from December, from November.
So they have since then come back for a design review application?
And exception, yes.
And exception. Thank you very much.
Councilor Muller?
Could we ask our attorney to also discuss penalties?
Yeah, I'd just like to address briefly the appeal procedures for the design review. It's a recommendation from ZDRB to the council. The council makes a decision. From there, that's final. For staff administrative enforcement, there is typically an appeal to a hearing officer for those types of notices of violation and any fines that are imposed, just to clarify that. For potential violations of the code, the zoning code and the design review code, the municipal code provides for different forms of enforcement, one of which is administrative enforcement. That is staff issuing fines at the staff level or penalties. The maximum penalty under the municipal code is up to a thousand dollars a day per violation, and those are cumulative rolling over per day. So potentially quite a lot from day to day as those accumulate.
So forty-five days in violation could mean up to forty-five thousand dollars.
It could under the code, yes.
And to continue on that, Sandra or Gary, what, if any, fines were levied on the other non-compliant items? You mentioned the knee walls. There was, parking was a concern because there was a question about, what's that? Question about employee headcount and parking, and I don't know that that rose to the level of non-compliance and fines, but were there fines, have there been fines at all levied in, so about what?
There have been. During constructions, they violated the noise ordinance on several occasions, and they were fined a thousand dollars a day each time they did that. They were fined, I believe, in regards to parking. And as they neared the completion of construction and the lot wasn't open for employees and guests because it was construction-related, so they were charged off-site spaces for parking. But in relation to the violations that led to the design review and exception applications, no fines have been levied to date.
I need to clarify.
Okay.
Actually, they have, because there were four days worth of fines before they brought the appeal in. So they have been fined eight thousand dollars.
Oh, right.
For what?
For the violation of.
The fireplace violation or something else?
The fireplace violation.
Okay, so eight thousand fireplace fines related to the knee wall or no? Because they, they brought that in compliance within the ninety days?
Right, right, right.
Okay, and you said other issues that were more, you know, contractor, subcontractor stuff? If we were to consider this, so maybe this goes back to Gary, exactly what we're being asked to do tonight and what we aren't doing tonight. So if this is in fact a design review question, how are we to respond to that? And then, an exception that needs to have particular findings reached in order to reach that exception, could you just walk us through, not only for our clarity, but for the audience's clarity?
Yes, my understanding, and Sandra, please correct me if this is incorrect. This is a new application that was submitted in late March for an exception to the design review requirement that an outdoor fireplace not exceed ten feet. So that's a requirement. It's a maximum height. In order to go higher than that, they need to somehow not comply with the code provisions. The zoning code allows two different procedures to do this. One is an exception, one is a variance. They both essentially contain the same requirements, findings that the council must meet or must find in order to approve the exception from the generally applicable requirement. In this case, there are four requirements. The first one is that there are unusual circumstances applying to the property involved or the intended use that do not apply generally to other property or uses in the same class of districts, so the same zoning district. The second is due to unusual circumstances not created or attributable to the applicant or the owner, the literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulty. The third is this exception will not constitute a grant of a special privilege that is inconsistent with limitations imposed on similarly zoned properties. The next is this exception will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or materially injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity, and the granting of such exception will be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the title and not adversely affect the general plan. And like all decisions of this nature that come before the council, the standard is substantial evidence in the record, and that includes all the material testimony this evening, any other documents, your understanding of the project in general, and anything else you might consider at tonight's hearing.
As it relates, oh, go ahead, Steve.
I also wanted, Sandra, can you clarify what action the zoning and design review board took with regard to this? Just for clarity.
The zoning and design review board reviewed the application that you saw in November and made a recommendation with regards to the fireplace to allow it to stay at eighteen feet, but they did recommend that the knee walls be reduced. Of course, that's a recommendation that came before the council, and the council's opinion differed from that. And that's why we have a different decision in the resolution.
Okay, and again, for clarity, if tonight the council says, you know, changes our opinion, change the position, we're not making a final determination on that tonight because there's no resolution to make an exception, we can instruct you to craft such a thing. The other question I had for clarity is, regardless of what we do tonight, either reconsider our position or not, the fines still stand. The potential for up to forty-five thousand dollars in fines over forty-five days still is applicable based on administrative determination.
That's right. If the council.
The council's determination. We don't decide fine or no fine, staff's determination.
That's right. It's up to staff in order to enforce the code. But if the council were to approve it this evening, it wouldn't cure any past violations to municipal codes. So anything that's happened up until the date of an approval has occurred, and the town could theoretically enforce that, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Doran Becker?
Sandra, during the time that they were submitting these different, you know, maps of the respective, did they ever call out the fact that they had changed the, from the fire pit to that?
No.
To the fountain?
Typically, those are noted in a construction set with a clouded area, or called out in some manner. It wasn't called out.
Thank you.
I think you recognized that that was our error for not catching it that early. You caught it, though, during the construction phase.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions of the staff report? Okay, thank you for being patient, sitting through our general plan process. Now, now's your turn.
It was very educational. One of our properties, sixty-seven twelve, is actually in the retail overlay.
There you go.
So, very interesting. So, just a couple things. I.
Hold on just a second. I want to make sure that, it looks like Nathan's up here doing some, I'm young enough to understand the technology thing.
I'm not even sure I'm gonna go to this presentation because I think it would be, because of the nature of this evening, but I do want to make a few points. And then if there are questions, I might be able to go to the presentation. No, I'm going to now. My name is David Stanchak, and I'm the President and Chief Real Estate and Development Officer for Restoration Hardware RH. So I'd just like to make a few brief points this evening. And a couple of those are, I think reasonable minds can differ on the applicable standards for design review. And the, really, the key to this is, the first staff report that was back in November really made a recommendation that all five items that we were requesting design review on be approved. And the design review board, the ZDRB, also unanimously suggested that the fireplace be approved, and the eighteen-foot fireplace. So I just kind of would say that the most recent staff report kind of goes a hundred and eighty degrees and says, well, none of those criteria have been satisfied. And I, I think that when you, when you kind of think about that logically, that that really doesn't make sense. And so I'm gonna appeal to logic and say, in one instance, back in the fall, we complied with all the design review, and then in May, we don't. And that, to me, is something I think bears being called out. And then also that we spent time and worked with the ZDRB in the review of the fireplace, and they unanimously thought we should go ahead and be approved. So I think that's important. Secondly, a couple of common sense observations I would like to make. I walked the street. Again, I tried to take a cold review of the facts and really walked the street this evening before I came over. And frankly, it was after I'd made this presentation, which was earlier today. Couple of things I'd like to point out. When you look at a outdoor fireplace and the chimney or flue that's there, in the context of all the different things that are on our building, for instance, we actually have three structures that, you know, for kitchen exhaust, et cetera, that are higher than the chimney itself. And if you go over there and look at it, it, it actually, the chimney is shorter than any of the other structures in the area. I think that really bears interest because one of the things, the criteria here is that we are somehow disharmonious to our environment. And I would say the two fireplaces that we have on our premises, when viewed in the context of the entire area, are not disharmonious. In fact, they fit quite well. Second thing that I would point out is that, and I realized this for the first time because I think one of the council members, and I was reviewing the November, you know, hearing here, one of the council members pointed out Jessup. And in particular, because of the way they built their fence, kind of has a sawtooth effect to it and complied with thirty-six-inch height requirement. We, on the other hand, did not. And it was clear that we had built a concrete wall in the front that was thirty-six inches high. When we saw the massing of the wall, we didn't like it. We thought it would be better if we softened it with boxwoods. Since taking those down, we're actually have planted more boxwoods in front, and we are gonna attempt in a different fashion to soften that because frankly, we don't think that's the right look. But we are in compliance now, and I recognize that. But my point is, when I went and looked at Jessup, within ten feet or so of the sidewalk is an outdoor fireplace that's at least twenty-four feet high. It's an outdoor fireplace that I looked at. Honestly, I'd never looked at it before, before this evening. And I thought to myself, gee, within ten, ten, twelve, fifteen feet of the front of the street, there is a fireplace that is over two stories high. Jessup is sort of a one-and-a-half, two-story tall building, so I'd have to surmise it's at least twenty-four feet, the height of the chimney because it goes over. And it is clearly an outdoor fireplace because it sits on the patio of the front. When you consider that and consider our two chimneys that are both fifty feet off, actually fifty-two feet off of Washington Street, you begin to understand the context of what our chimneys mean. And to me, when you consider that, along with the other structures we have on our property, as well as the tall trees and the two-story structures that are the old Masonry building, I think you begin to understand from a common sense standpoint that the application of this ten-foot height restriction on either of our chimneys makes really no sense in context. I do understand the ordinance, and I appreciate it. And there probably are some very important instances where the application of it would satisfy or would somehow ensure harmony, safety, or other things that are an import to the town. The last thing that I would bring up, we, we have a situation with these particular fireplaces. There was questions from the council members that this is gas, and therefore it doesn't really need much venting. The manufacturer's specifications on this, which we've submitted as well as an ARBUS report, it will throw off between four hundred and five hundred degrees of heat, and that heat does not dissipate in ten feet. Matter of fact, when there's structures near it, they're suggesting at least a two-to-four-foot-high extension above, which they said minimum is nine-and-a-half feet. But they're suggesting when you have structures next to it that you need to have at least four feet of clearance over and above the manufacturer's specification or the structure that's near it. When you consider Brandywine Commons, the lowest point of their eve is at ten-and-a-half feet. The highest point of their peak is at about twenty-four to twenty-six feet. When you consider, we're at eighteen feet, it allows a dissipation of the, of the heat. And then also, these isocorns do not, they're not, what I would say, they have a dust or a soot that can be emanated from it. All you have to do is go over and look at it, and you'll see black streaks that are coming down some of our isocorn fireplaces. And you'll see they're not, what I'd say, purely clear burning. They're not wood burning, of course, and they are certainly, you know, really phenomenal fireplace. And by the way, very expensive. We went, we spared no expense in the way we built this property. Matter of fact, you know, we're at about thirty-two million dollars of investment in that property. And I think all the council members, and I appreciate, you know, before, you know, we were denied last time, I think each council member commented on how beautiful of a. I think each council member commented on how beautiful of a property that we developed and that they've enjoyed it and we've, we've enjoyed great reviews and certainly we're a popular destination. So I think those are a few of the, the key things. The arborist report, which we've also submitted, we planted over fifty, hundred-year-old olive trees all throughout the property, both interior and exterior. And we have the olive trees that are down on the north end, which is an eighteen-footer, which, you know, quite frankly, you know, somehow was either missed, approved, I'm not quite sure. It's hard to read exactly what happened. I can tell you that throughout the, the development and construction process, we made thousands upon thousands of right decisions and in some instances, we made wrong decisions. I assure you, we spent the money on architects and consultants and specialists to ensure that we complied with every ordinance that we could. These are not conscious decisions on our part to disregard things when we have architects involved. But in certain situations, you know, we had an unintended result. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, Sandra and, and Steve said to us, look, we, the eighteen-foot-high fireplace that's on the north end of the property, you know, that is not in compliance, however, it, it got through. That was not our intention to slip that through. Now with the south end, our stated purpose was symmetry and we are symmetrical in everything we've done out there. The only thing that's not symmetrical is the historic masonry building. I mean frankly, that's probably the, when you think about the overall purpose of the, the Old Town Commercial Real Estate zoning designation, I think we could be maybe the poster child for open and pedestrian-friendly. We created a south entrance next to masonry to create this wonderful pedestrian way. And, you know, I was there the other morning. People are walking their dogs through there, you know, at seven, eight o'clock in the morning and they love to come there. Why? We have water features we turn on, the fireplaces we keep on and they are a source of warmth. People enjoy them, especially on the, the cold, you know, nights that we experience and some of the rainy nights unfortunately we had this year. So, you know, when you kind of, when you kind of really look at this holistically and try to take a common sense approach and take a step back and look at the entire surroundings, these two eighteen-foot fireplaces, quite frankly, are not really even a, a material part of the landscape. When you consider the Jessup wood burning fireplace, or excuse me, the fireplace, outdoor fireplace across the street, when you consider the other structures that are in the area that are substantially higher than eighteen feet, and I'm talking about chimney-like structures. Matter of fact, right next to it, Brandywine, within ten feet also has another chimney on the front of it that's at least twenty-two feet high. So when you consider some of these things in context, I think that our request for an exception is, is warranted. I believe that a necessary finding would be that to take it down from eighteen to ten feet, the unintended consequence could be that we are going to throw heat on our neighbors, which are literally right next door to us. To date, we've had endorsement from Brandywine, including the immediate adjacent resident. Bill Rossi and Ruben Perez have sent in letters that they are supportive of the fireplace, do not want to see it lowered. We have not had any complaints from, from Brandywine at all and, and we've done our very best to be great neighbors to them. So I'd ask respectfully that you would consider these common sense ideas as well as the application of the six criteria necessary to find an exception. I believe we satisfy them all. I briefed it in our application. And I'm always available if, during the period of time after this hearing, to spend time with ZDRB or with, with the staff to come up with an acceptable plan. If there is something else that, that we can come up with that could satisfy town council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant specifically? Okay.
I did sense in the November here, a bit of RH fatigue and I, I do appreciate that we are an iterative group, that we have created something special. We made lots of, like we do, changes and iterations to create something that we think is very romantic and beautiful. By the way, globally, I would just say this, we are now going to be opening our first galleries in London and Paris. So we, we are attracting a global clientele. It's a global brand now. But Yountville is near and dear to our hearts. It's a very special place that we engage the global clientele. That's what it was designed to do. Yountville's helped us to build our brand. I think the foresight to allow us to do masonry, the F&amp;B experience and the gallery has been really brilliant and people, it has elevated our brand and I think really done something to the north side that is special. I think we've elevated the property values around us and I think it's created a very positive effect. Again, one of the criteria, the six criteria in the exception, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Councilor Durham, you have a question?
Thank you for your presentation. Was any of this discussion or this presentation that you've given to us now, given to the ZDRB, given to anybody else besides us at this point for these explanations?
Well, ZDRB, there was no explanation required because they had unanimously approved the fireplace. Now, I would also say that Jordan Brown, who's normally here, and those of you know her, by the way, she had a beautiful little girl, Audrey. She sends her regards and she would like to be the one making this presentation. But the fact is, the ZDRB, we went through that process and they unanimously recommended approval of the fireplace.
But you went to the ZDRB to get an exception for the ten feet to the eighteen, correct?
Correct, correct. As we did with the other four things we were looking at.
Correct. I'm just trying to piece together the timeline and the length of time and the process to get here to this point right now, to tell me all these things, when a lot of it is the first time I've ever hearing it. And let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was on the ZDRB when you first came to present this idea to Yountville and I've been on the town council since then and this is the first time I'm hearing about any of these. So I'm just trying to figure out the time, timeframe and the thought process.
I appreciate that. I, I think we were caught off guard in November with unanimous ZDRB recommendation and staff recommendation for approval of all the items that we put forth. I, I will tell you, I was not here, in fact, when questioned. We were like, ZDRB has given us unanimous approval, the staff is recommending approval. Frankly, we should be able to get through this fine. No need for you to come, Dave. We were taken back and surprised and frankly, you know, we had to think pretty quickly. And to, to really measure, the, the two things I think that were denied were important. The knee wall, we went ahead and made the decision, let's go ahead and change it. Now, we were dealing with a lot of weather and a lot of rain and we had trouble even getting people to work. Steel workers who are working with arc welders will not work in the, in the rain. And so we did have difficulty during the rainy season to try to get that accomplished. However, it is accomplished and we are seeking to even mitigate more by planting the boxwoods. The fireplace, when I examined it, frankly, makes no sense to me that we would not be permitted to keep it at eighteen feet. The fact that by going at risk, and I appreciate it was our risk, but we already had one that was eighteen feet that we thought was approved. It's now come out that it really wasn't approved. It was somehow part of a, a plan that was, was missed. You know, really, when I looked at it and I made the decision to move forward with the south fireplace at risk, thinking that common sense would be that we would be granted an exception for this. So that's on us and we, and we, you know, we accept that.
Are there questions of the applicant at this point? Nothing right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there members of the public want to comment on this item?
Pam Reeve, sixty-eight eighty-seven Jefferson Street. I did walk through the property this evening just to see what it looked like and I, I totally see what the applicant is saying about the symmetry and the aesthetic quality of his fireplaces. But I worry that the south fireplace is on the property line. And if the town has an ordinance that says it can't be more than ten feet, I worry that if you give an exception just because he already built it, that, that will encourage other applicants to go ahead and violate our rules and then ask for an exception. That's a concern that I think all residents have, that we need to enforce our rules. And frankly, I don't want to see him cut it down to ten feet and, and expose the residents at Burgundy Commons to soot or heat or whatever. It seems like he should change it to a fire pit and then we all be happy. And maybe in exchange for that, you would consider not charging him fines. There are options.
Thank you. Any other members of the public want to comment? Seeing no others. I do have a, oh, well, almost got through there, Whitney.
Just kidding. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I will, I will stand her three minutes. Whitney Diver-McAvoy with Yountville Chamber of Commerce. I thought Dave made really good points to think with common sense. I know we all have RH fatigue in terms of coming back to council and staff and I understand that. But I think we need to make sure that our decision tonight and how we're moving forward with this particular item is not being clouded by other issues with parking or staff, et cetera. So I think that's really important to keep in mind. Sounds like things were missed on both sides and I think both sides have acknowledged that. It sounds like the applicant is looking to do the right thing and continues to work to do the right, the right thing and they are good neighbors. Also, Burgundy Commons has expressed support to keep the fireplace at eighteen feet, which I think is really important. I think if they weren't supportive of this, I think this would probably be a very different conversation. So I would just ask that you guys keep that in mind as we're deciding how to move forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Miller.
I'm just going to clarify. Stephen Miller, I live on Jefferson Street. I'm going to put this down. Does this work?
You can also just move the microphone down.
Oh, wow. Wow. I didn't know that that worked. How cool. I sit, I sit on the Design Review Board that reviewed this and I just want to clarify. We, we recommended to council that we approve it, but it was a recommendation that was given after it was built and after they came to approach us with the design and other designs that were already built that we were asked to give an approval on. So just to clarify that. The, it is not on the property line. It's just in from the property line and that was a concern of mine, that ten feet at the property line would have been, or something over ten feet would have been really negligent. But it's not at the property line. It's in, well within their property. I think there's a five-foot setback there. Is that correct?
It's five foot eight inches.
Five foot eight. I agree that it looks great. It's really beautiful. One of the things that was represented was that there are a, a model of openness and that was, again, something that came up at that ZDRB meeting, was that they wanted to close that, that property at certain hours and we required that they not close it at certain hours. So I think there's a little bit of a shell game going on here, but I, I would say, from my estimation, my, my recommendation would be to approve, to keep it the way that it is and then in an effort to deter people from asking for forgiveness after they've already completed projects like this, is to apply some kind of a fine.
So I just want to make it clear, you're speaking on your own behalf and not on the ZDRB's behalf?
I'm, yeah, sure.
With that recommendation?
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that you're not representing a position, formal position for the ZDRB.
I am not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I have a question and I wish I remembered back to June of two thousand and eight. I was on the zoning and design review board with the Jessup sellers when it was Volakis Gallery and I believe that fireplace was in place then, when it was the gallery. I don't remember one-hundred percent, though. Things get grandfathered in all the time. That might be one of them, just as a heads up. Jessup is much newer than that, but the gallery was there for a long time.
And it's not a detached fireplace. It's attached to the building, so the, this standard we're considering tonight doesn't apply. This standard applies to detached accessory structures and is specific to detached fireplaces.
I specifically remember a residential violation. Are we treating residential and commercial identical if this happens? Because in particular, in Washington Park, a resident built a detached fireplace in the corner of the backyard well over the height limit and was forced to cut it down to compliance. So are these being applied, commercial is the same as residential?
Yes, it applies to commercial and residential properties. The difference here is that since it's a commercial property developed under a master development plan, an exception can apply and the exception language specifically calls out heights of structures, walls and fences. It doesn't state a fireplace, but the same analysis would apply.
I think there might have been something about no building permit for that. That was a little more of a unique situation as well. Okay. Other questions for discussion? If not, discussion. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I know we had quite an extensive discussion on this the, the last time we talked about it. And when we talked about it at that time, I was very compelled by staff's discussion when they went out to do, what do you call that, building check? The building check or?
Site inspection?
Site inspection or something like that, whatever term you use. That it was at that time that you notified them, whether it was our mistake, their mistake, combination of mistakes that it did not fit within our ordinance and you notified them that it would have to come to us. But it, it never did. There was this big lapse and maybe that's what people are calling RH fatigue. I don't know.
I need to stop you just for a second. Protocol, I need to close the public hearing formally. I did not do that. Michelle is nodding with a, if you had a ruler, you would probably hold it out and slap my hand right now.
Write a note, a piece of paper.
All right. So anyway, sorry for the interruption, but go ahead.
So it's, at that time, we heard a lot of argument about the symmetry and the olive trees and, and this and all that. But we made a unanimous decision at that time to say that it needed to come down to, to ten feet. I also have a fireplace in my backyard. I maintained all the setbacks and it's at ten feet and everything. And I don't really, I understand the, the height and I understand the, the temperature. You can certainly, you don't have, I don't have to crank the gas all the way open to have the blast furnace coming out of the top so I get four-hundred Fahrenheit out of there. So I, I just haven't heard anything that's really changed my mind about this. Certainly, the smoke from the olive trees can be mitigated by how hot you turn, you run the fireplace. So, and I've been in there recently and there's, looks like there's a lot of dying olive trees inside of the restaurant, although I'm not an arborist, but I can see dead leaves falling around. So I, I don't know what's going on in there right now, but I, I just haven't heard anything that necessarily changed my mind to, to provide an exception here. Certainly, when you, you really have to turn to the right or turn to the left. You cannot, standing in the middle is really hard to see both fireplaces. So I was not compelled by the design argument there. So I just haven't seen anything new that would change my mind about the fireplace.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Durham?
I, I don't have RH fatigue. I've actually learned a lot since I was on the ZDRB and on the council and through this process have appreciated everything I've learned. So I don't have fatigue. I also want to be clear that this to me is not about parking or staff issues or anything else going on as well. This is about a simple exception that's being asked for. I like the property. I said it before. We go there. We go there and I will continue to go there. My father built quite a few homes in his lifetime in Napa and we didn't see eye to eye on everything and we definitely didn't see eye to eye on exceptions. I thought sometimes they should be allowed and my father said it would set a very difficult precedence, once you make one exception. And this is coming from a man who built over 75 homes. Sorry, highly respected him and respect that position. I want to read something here. The Yountville Municipal Code to find an exception and it's 17-152.020, which the town attorney read earlier. There's five points here and it's clear that I need to find all five points to be true to allow those exceptions. And I've got to go to the first point. There are unusual circumstances applying to this property involved or to the intended use of the property, it's already applying to the property because it's already been built, that do not apply generally to other property or uses in the same class of this district and the answer is definitely no. So, even based on that alone, the first one's already false, so we don't even move forward. I respect the applicant's presentation and the points brought up, but there's legal nonconforming. We're living in a community that's very fortunate to have RH here, we understand the value of the property, we understand the increases and the improvements that have been made, but we're still a small community that needs to play by these rules. And I agree with the public comment as well. Once we start allowing one exception, we will have plenty of people stepping up, asking for more and saying, "But they did it." And but, I want to come back to the fact that based on the Yountville Municipal Code of these five findings, these five findings cannot be all made in the affirmative. So, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
I really, really, really love the design of RH and I feel bad that there have been mistakes made on both sides. Still, we are, we're really ruled by the findings and I have to agree with Councilmember Durham. I can't, even though as much as I would like to, I can't find a justification for changing the rules for RH. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I also have an issue with the findings, but I have an issue with finding number two. Due to unusual circumstances not created or attributable to the applicant or owner of the property, the literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulty. I have a litany here, I guess I'll go through it for the record. At the November hearing, I asked your representative what her architect had said about the code or I asked the architect and the architect said, as I recall, "I didn't read the code." So, that, to me, is attributable to the applicant or owner. I know that staff didn't catch the fire pit, but apparently there is some factual question as to whether or not it was properly or not properly, but called out as in standard operating procedure. I think that cuts both ways. I also think I heard comments tonight that the applicant was aware that the original fireplace was compliant. You thought it was approved, it wasn't approved. Again, that is a circumstance created or attributable to the applicant or owner. And finally, we did a stop work order. I've heard comments tonight that at your own peril, you understood you were proceeding to build it as you built it. I don't really know anything about any RH fatigue or whatever that may entail. And I do love your project. I mean, I really do. It's beautiful, I am there, I send people there. But I echo the rest of my fellow council members in saying, no matter how beautiful I may find it, we have these for a reason and the reason is, everybody plays on a level field. So, I cannot make the proper finding to find an exception.
Thank you. I'm not able to find all of these findings either. One of my challenges is, you know, I originally, when we had this conversation a few months ago, said that I was willing to let the fireplace stand, literally, that it's not that visible from the street and other reasons. The process that got us here, I'll be kind, I don't like it at all. I don't think the town was taken seriously. I think frankly, I am not going to cast any blame on Sandra or Nathan or any of our staff about not catching a, what is it, in my opinion, a significant change, because there was not going to be a fireplace at one end and a fire pit at the other. And so, the way you guys do the synergy and every detail, every inch is, as Mr. Freeman presented and we all know, this didn't just happen into a plan set at some point. There was plenty of opportunity to call this out ahead of time. And so, the process alone leaves me great concern about how seriously you take our laws, frankly. We said it from the very beginning, this is going to be a leap of faith for us in Yountville. I mean, RH and the former brand, global, yes. Also, used to five, six, seven-story bank buildings and Beverly Hills and we said, "We're not that." And you said, "We get it, we're going to do it the Yountville way." And in a lot of cases, you absolutely have and we can all continue to say how beautiful it is, but I wrote down, I just, you know, disharmonious to our environment. And the, I guess the argument is, what's, who are you talking about when it's our environment? Is it the environment inside the property or the environment outside the property? Because it's not harmonious when a decision can be made in the interest of a ribbon cutting to ignore our law when it's brought to your attention. And I don't even know if that was the first time it was brought up. We have other businesses in town we have held accountable, none of them like it because it either slows down the opening or it costs money or both usually. We try to protect our interests while also supporting our businesses. And as frustrating as it is for me personally, you just haven't allowed us to do that to a level that I wish we could, to be more supportive, to allow the exception. But the way the findings are written, I mean, there are maybe three of these that I can argue, okay. But I also, I really don't, I don't appreciate the argument that the trees we put in after we built the thing too high are now at risk of being, you know, their lifespan being shortened because you let us build a fireplace that's 18 feet high. So, I think, I'm frustrated that I can't be supportive, but I can. And you've heard all the reasons. Next steps, good question. I feel like it's a, you know, I think the staff, we haven't even fined you anything yet on this. It could be upwards of $45,000 and then you're talking about, and I get that, this might be, you know, a rounding error in the budget, but to then dismantle and rebuild, I get it, it's not an inconsequential circumstance. But I don't feel like the town put you in that position, frankly. So, I thought that a few months ago, when we had the difficult conversation and we said, "No, we're not kidding about the walls, no, we're not kidding about the fireplace," that we would have seen more good faith to get us to a conclusion. Yes, you took down the walls, but here we are. And so, you heard it from all of us then and you're hearing it again, that not okay. I mean, how we got here is not okay, so I can't support it. I can't support the request. So, with that, Sandra, tell us, I assume that's direction?
That is, thank you.
You need, Gary, is there something else you need from us?
No, I think that's enough. Staff will come back with a resolution.
Okay. So, that is it for that public hearing. And, you know, it feels like it's a heavy weight, it's a bummer, right? I mean, it doesn't feel good, but we didn't get us here, I don't think. We were put in this position, so enough of me. But also, again, I appreciate that you sat through these hours to get here and hear us in our position, so thank you for that.
Point of order.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, you're not on the microphone and it's, but appreciate the, appreciate your comments, yes. Yeah, appreciate your comments, which, yeah, basically, we're, you know, supportive of the town and the council and the relationship that we have, so thank you very much for that. We need to move on, we actually, I need to entertain a motion for continuance past 10:00 PM. Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion for 10:02.
Is there a substitute motion?
I'll make a motion, substitute motion for C past 10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with your protest noted. We have no administrative regular items. Do we have any staff interracial reports that are needed? No. Council meeting reports, only those that are really necessary at this hour. I was unable to attend the flood control meeting today, they were going to have a second hearing on Rutherford Reach zoning, not directly related to Yountville, so moving on. Not Valley Transportation Authority Meeting will be on May 15th. Upper Valley Waste Management, is there anything on fire or leaking into waterways?
The landfill is currently open, we have a two-week reprieve, so bring your garbage. And speaking of garbage, we're going to have a townwide cleanup after the Mother's Day garage sale, so get your stuff, throw it on the street, you got all your little cards in the mail.
Glad they're not, or we're not having to cancel that, that's good, I know. Unfortunately, I already see people putting stuff out 10 days ahead. Okay. Any other meetings I've got, very quickly, I'll go through, you already talked about the yard sale and cleanup day. Very quickly, League of California Cities update, there has been some significant movement with a lot of the housing bills that are being run through committees. I attended Legislative Action Day along with other members of the North Bay Division of the League and we met with several legislators, including our Senator Dodd and also with Senator Weiner, who is the author of SB 50, which is kind of the leading housing bill, many elements of which we're a little uncomfortable with. So, the league continues to negotiate through our lobbyists to try to get some content in there that's a little, or hopefully, a lot more compatible for local government. I won't even go into the details of the bill because they probably already changed since I wrote this down a few days ago. But just understand, housing bills are still the hottest topic in Sacramento and we just need to keep paying attention. Any other reports or announcements? We have no closed session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn to our special budget workshop meeting, which is Thursday, May 9th at 9:30 AM in this room. Is there such a motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Good night. Thank you.